I pledge allegiance to get started. Flag is here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to start with just an introduction, finding this Bill Lavermondi. I'm the CEO of Orange County IDA. The chairman of our board of directors, Jeff Christ, is right next to me. We also have our director of administration, Kelly Riley. Our general counsel, Mr. Rudy Zoda. We also have Jamie Fernandez, who is our stenographer today and audio visual for us. We have the live stream this. Every meeting we have is live streamed. It's being handled by acquisitions marketing, Mr. William Lyerson over there. Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing officially at 6:41 PM. I wanted to just let you know how the hearing will run tonight. First of all, I'm going to read a notice. It's just a public hearing notice. Many of you have probably already read that. It does give you some details on the project and the incentives. I'm going to go through the written comments we've received today. I want to tell you this, and I'll say this a couple more times. We will still accept written comments as long as they are received by June 26 at 4:00 PM. So if you want to make a public comment or anyone else wants to leave this written comment, send that to the IDA by June 26, please. So we will go through the written comments we've already received, and then we will open the floor up for public comment. We are going to limit it to three minutes each. We have a timer here, so please be respectful of that if you would. And after the hearing, everyone is heard. We're expected to hear everyone tonight and go as long as we have to, but we'll close the hearing at that point. I just want to ask for conduct, please. I've been respectful of everyone here. I've talked to many of you on the phone. I'll give you as much time as you want to afterward to speak to me. I do have my business card up here, so my cellphone is on here, my work address, my email. I invite anyone to come up afterward and get that. Be happy to speak to you if you want to talk at further length. But tonight, please, let's keep our comments to three minutes. Keep them oriented around the incentives. We don't want to hear about planning board issues, zoning issues. Those meetings are coming up later this week, so I encourage you to attend those. But right now, it's just about the incentives. Please stick it to that and just asking for some decorum, some mutual respect and civility. That's all we ask for. Thanks so much. I'm sure that's what we'll have this evening. I'm going to start with reading the public hearing notice, and then we'll go from there. Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to Article 18A of the New York State Municipal Law will be held by the Orange County Industrial Development Agency, known as the agency, on June 10, 2025, at 6:30 PM in Mendocino Valley High School, Middle School, part 2320, State Route 6, Slade Hill, New York 10973. The public hearing will concern the agency providing financial assistance for a project more fully described below. Skanel Properties Number 600 LLC and Amazon.com Services LLC, known as the Co-Applicants, have requested that the agency provide financial assistance for a proposed project consisting of the demolition of the existing underutilized properties and redevelopment and construction of a 3.2 million square foot building located at 22 McBride Road, Slade Hill, New York 10973, known as the premises, in the village of Slade Hill, town of Waywayanda, the project. The estimated cost of the project is approximately $607 million. The project will include the demolition of the existing underutilized properties and redevelopment and construction of the premises to be used as warehousing and distribution facility and administrative offices and the acquisition of machinery and equipment related thereto. The requested financial assistance will include, one, the providing of an exemption from sales tax on behalf of Skanel Properties Number 600 LLC of up to $18,821,250 for amounts expended for the renovation and construction of the facility for expenditures of up to $225 million; and two, the providing of an exemption from sales tax on behalf of Amazon.com Services LLC of up to $12,187,500 for amounts expended for the furnishing and equipping of the facility for expenditures of up to $150 million; and three, payment in lieu of tax benefits, known as pilot, in amounts to be established by the effective tax and jurisdictions. Copies of the applicant's application for financial assistance, including an analysis of the costs and benefits of the proposed project, will be available for review by interested persons from the date of the publication of this notice to the date of the public hearing for the project at the offices of the agency at 4 Proti Lane, Street 100, New Windsor, New York 12553 during normal business hours on reasonable notice to the agency. The telephone number of the agency is 845-220-2208. The agency will, at the above stated time and place, hear all persons with views in favor of or opposed to the providing of the financial assistance described herein. A representative of the agency will be at the above stated time and place to hear oral comments and accept written comments from all persons with views in favor of or opposed to the granting of any of the foregoing financial assistance for the location or nature of the project. Date of May 23, 2025, by myself, William Lavermondi, CEO of the Orange County Industrial Development Agency. Okay, thank you. That's out of the way. I also just want to be clear of what is available on the Orange County website, the IDA website. That is www.oconida.com. We aim for full transparency, so everything related to this project and any other project is available on our website. The easiest way is to go to the projects tab and just enter the name of the project, just any keyword, and it will come up. You'll be able to find the original application, the cost benefit analyses that we've done, and we commissioned a third party to do, this public hearing notice, any formal document by the IDA related to this. You'll also be able to read the transcript from this hearing as early as Friday, but I will commit to Monday, just in case there's any delay. So that will be on the website. And again, any meeting that we have related to this or any other projects or any other matter is live streamed. So you'll be able to watch it live, like people are doing it home now, or after the fact, you can find that video on the website. All right? Just want to make that clear. I'm going to get to written comments now that we've received to date. These are everything we've received to the minute. I'm going to read the supervisors, because it's supervisor from the town, and I'm going to give you, just paraphrasing the others. This is from Denise Quinn, supervisor, town of Waywayanda, the chairman, Chris, and the IDA board. As supervisor of the town of Waywayanda, I understand how important economic development is to our community. We believe in supporting local labor and understand that with some large projects come the reality of financial incentives being used to compete with neighboring states that may make the overall cost of the project cheaper. I also understand the value of any development being tied to a pilot with a local labor agreement. We know that in the absence of this pilot agreement, Amazon has a right would be entitled to various New York State tax incentive programs worth millions without having to hire local employees and purchase materials locally. However, after looking at the current 20-year pilot being offered, I believe our community can do better. While we respect the Orange County IDA's process and understand this pilot schedule was available as part of their uniformed tax exemption policy, I'll use that, I would like to formally request a meeting with Amazon representatives to discuss a deviation from the current pilot agreement being proposed. I would like to have this conversation in good faith to explore other options. I believe we need to do better than what is in front of us. It is my hope that we can come to an agreement that preserves this project and its potential positive impact sincerely to this point. So that is from our supervisor. I also have, and I'll just breeze through these, from Assemblyman Carl Bravenek from the 98th District. He's writing in support of the incentives. We also have a letter from Brian Marr from the Assembly District 101. He's also writing in support of the incentives. Then I have an email from Jared Alpert, West Town, New York. He's writing in opposition to the incentives. Then we have an email from Mr. Philip J. Smith. I'm not sure where he lives, but he is also writing in opposition to the incentives. Then we have a letter from the Hudson Valley Economic Development Corporation, specifically signed by Sarah Lee, who's their executive vice president, in support of the incentives. And then we have, lastly, an email from Greg Robey, who lives in Highland Mills, and he is writing about the DDC permit information on the original application, so not about the incentives, just pointing out something there. Those are all the written comments we've had today. And once again, we will accept further written comments until June 26. That's a Thursday at 4:00 PM. We need to receive them by now, so keep that in mind for postal service and such. But we will hear those. We're going to open the floor up now for public comments. I've got my first two sheets, and I think we've got another one active. Again, we're looking to hear all of them tonight. I'm going to start with Julie Patterson. Julie, if you're here, please, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julie Patterson. I'm at 82 Kirby Town Road in Midtown. First of all, I want to thank you for having this meeting at a longer venue, giving the public the chance to participate. I am outraged that I've even here in the first place. This should have been shut down months ago. Amazon is a global billion-dollar company, and I assure you or someone you know spends their hard-earned money on losing services from Hong Kong. Why are they asking for a 20-year pilot? This is a self-created hardship. This is outrageous. Maybe someone who can afford to keep paying higher taxes and it doesn't affect you. But what about the residents on a fixed income? People struggling to put food on the table. This is outrageous. How does this benefit the residents of Waywayanda? Most of the jobs will be filled by people in neighboring cities like Midtown with minimum-paid jobs. You will be getting zero dollars from Amazon for maybe 10 years, and they will move on. How does this benefit the towns? Look at the history of warehouses in our area. They abandon them and move on, leaving us with the burden and shaking our heads. It is time for the residents to speak up and say no to the pilot in this mega warehouse. They talk about the robotics and the magnitude of this warehouse. Shame on them for even considering this. This is a slap in the face to the residents. Do not dump this burden on the residents of Waywayanda. We did not ask for this. We don't want to be known as a warehouse city or an "Amazawanda." And to the IDA and the Orange County partnership, why don't you find someone to build a sports complex, a hockey league, a ball field, a basketball field for the recreation of our children? Now that would bring in revenue and be beneficial to our youth of today. Thank you.
Can we get... Is Jim Burris still in? Or IT, John Hart? Just ask if you can lift the mic a little bit. We just want to make sure I can hear you. Next is Barbara. I'm sorry, I can't read this part. DeDe4? Okay.
Hi, my name is Barbara DeDe4. I live at 268 Geneva Road in Ridgeberry. I'm just here tonight to say that this should not have even gotten this far. I'm totally against the pilot. I feel like the town of Waywayanda has been sold out by the town supervisor Denise Quinn, the town board, and the planning board, specifically John Resanna. Thank you.
Matt Ross. Matt Ross.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Ross. I live in Mendocino Valley. Lived on Route 6 myself, grew up there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. President of Carpenter Local 279. Worked on this building as a carpenter. So, Project Bluebird. It's going to create over 2,000 direct and indirect jobs. Establishes itself as a powerful catalyst in our local economy. The initiative will generate 650 permanent jobs with a competitive wage of $20 per hour, resulting in an annual salary of $41,600. This translates to a remarkable annual economic impact of $27 million. Additionally, it will introduce 75 permanent positions paying about $30 an hour or $62,400 annually, contributing another $4.68 million to the economy each year. For context, the annual median per capita income in New York is $37,683, while the median household income is $69,021. The projected $90 million in new tax revenue will significantly enhance the county, town, and school district. Several services, such as the ambulance district and fire department throughout the payment of the pilot agreement, all right? In stark contrast, without this project, the community will only see $4 million in tax revenue over the same period. The initiative boasts an impressive 7 to 1 benefit to cost ratio for every dollar invested in the tax abatements. Our community stands to gain $7 in economic return. In year one, the projected tax benefits will reach $650,604 compared to what it is now, $150,000. In year three, it will increase to $1 million. In year six, it's expected to hit just under $2 million. In year 12, it will total almost $5 million. And by year 20, we anticipate it reaching $10 million. These aren't a cumulative numbers. It will go up between the first year and the third year. It'll go up $700,000, $800,000. So follow, if you follow along. Moreover, this venture will bring a staggering $600 million in private investment, generate hundreds of construction jobs, providing extensive work for local tradespeople, our neighbors, our friends, our sports coaches, Boy Scout leaders, and people that volunteer for our community. Project Bluebird will create at least 750 direct and permanent jobs, hundreds of construction positions that will support local and union workers. Employees will have immediate access to health and retirement benefits as well as tuition assistance for higher education workforce credentials across various fields. This initiative exemplifies the commitment to enhancing the lives of our workforce and their families. Together, we are set to build a brighter and more prosperous future for our community. Thank you. And with that being said, Carpenter Local 279 stands in favor of this.
Thank you, Matt Ross. Don Berger. Mr. Berger. Okay, thank you. You'd have to get within a couple inches of the mic to be heard, hear you best, please.
Don Berger. I'm the chairperson for residents of protective Montgomery. I'm here to speak against this tax pilot. We have a long history, RPM, for fighting these pilots. We did have, 10 years ago, when Amazon came to Montgomery, we fought it vigorously. And two of the board members up there right now are very much aware of the fighting that went on with that. Went on forever. It was long. And it sounds to me that you're already asking for written comments and you're going to be closing this public hearing tonight. And I hope you're not going to do that, though. So, this is how I see it. The town of Montgomery in this past budget year had an 18% tax increase to the residents of Montgomery. The village of Montgomery had 11% tax increase to the residents of the village of Montgomery. The Valley Central School District had a 5.2% to the taxpayers and residents of Montgomery. Amazon, sure, they do pay a small share of taxes, but if they paid their full boat, this year's school budget of $3 million, a little in excess of $3 million, the residents would have had probably not even a 1% tax increase, but they had a 5.2% if they only paid their taxes. The problem here is that we keep giving these abatements out, and they think that everything is great, and it's not. Because, let me ask you folks something. All you IDAs, I know I always had to deal with the town of Montgomery's IDA, not the Orange County IDA. One simple question. When are the residents going to get a break? It never happens. And that's a shame by all IDA boards. That's a shame. When, you know, in the village of Montgomery and Montgomery, many, many people are moving out of that town because they can't afford to live there anymore. And what we're doing in transition is we're getting people from Bergen County, from Manhattan, from Westchester County, moving up. Strange spaces, we don't know who they are. I am all for the unions having good jobs, but the unions can also be asking for those jobs at the planning stage, and they're not doing that. They come to you guys. They should ask for it at the planning stage, and the planning board should demand it, that union labor will work on these projects. But they don't do that. I recommend that they do that. The problem here is that in... The amounts of monies that we're going to have to pay is not equivalent to what everybody else is paying. And all I'm asking for is that this board says no to a pilot. They need to pay their fair share. The burden cannot be on the backs of residents forever. That's the problem here in New York State. Mass exodus out of this state because... Thank you.
Thomas Salamone.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Some of you who may know me, my name is Thomas Salamone. I'm a resident of the town of Greenville, stakeholder in the town. I've built three houses over the past 22 years living here. So I'm a taxpayer. I've also served almost nine years on the Mendocino Valley School Board, so I've been on that end too of pilot programs. This is now the third largest project that Mendocino Valley has seen. One was the compressor station. One was CPV. As a resident and a school board member, I'll never feel those pilots were exactly fair and probably could have been negotiated a little bit better. I think we have an opportunity. The town does meet things. The school district does meet things. The town of Greenville has gotten grant money to put in a new park, which was a great addition. I know the school could benefit from new turf fields. There was a capital improvement years ago to build a cafeteria. That won't be into food commission now because obviously building materials are a lot more money than seven years ago. The jobs that these projects do create a lot of jobs. And yes, they are our neighbors, and we're kind of sometimes missing the boat as a community here. There's also an abandoned set of train tracks behind the Amazon facility that runs into Unionville that I know over the years RJ Ford, the town supervisors of Mendocino has tried to restore that. Maybe that's some of a concession that we could get back as a town. Maybe the town can start to get behind a little bit more in these projects. I will say the landscaping that is going into the Amazon project is the largest that they've ever done. Maybe they could push it a little bit further. Again, the community could get behind, maybe some living walls, some more greenery on the building itself. Lastly, maybe we could also explore, which would create more jobs for the trades, an exit ramp over 84 as they did for Legoland. That will need some of the traffic on Route 6. I do think it's better than aquarium right now, and I think we have to be a little bit realistic that no developer is going to go in there and build houses. There's millions of dollars worth of site work that's mounted material that has to be moved, and it's just not feasible in the end what taxes we would get from residential homes versus a project like this. In the Mendocino Valley, the tax burden is always on homeowners. We don't have many ratables. And the ratables that have come in, I think we could just do a little bit better. I do agree with supervisors of waywayanda. I think we just need to renegotiate this, and it works for our parties. And at the end of the day, we all use Amazon, and we like their services. So, you know, this could be a good addition if we got some concessions back in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we would just ask for, if you want to keep your comments just to the scope of this hearing, which is about the incentives. Thank you. Next is Tom Coleman.
Tom Coleman. 68 McVeigh Road, New Hampton. I'm also a member of IBW Local 363, and I'm in favor of the incentives that you're proposing because I believe it would be beneficial for the community in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm having trouble reading this. Is it Matt Lein? I can't tell if that's in. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I just want to take a moment to talk about the incentives of Project Bluebird. First and foremost, the immediate benefits from the jobs. Where else could bring hundreds of new positions to the area? That means local residents with steady incomes, more chances for young people to build a future here and spend it all on small businesses. Second, a project besides usually leads to improvements in our infrastructure. Better roads, updated facilities, utilities, you name it. Fire departments, police stations, they all get like benefits from this. Third, you know, you can pretty much ensure that this project's going to get done the right way. You know, hiring local unions, fair wages, traffic planning, and environmental protections for everybody, you know? This warehouse isn't just about boxes and trucks, about jobs, growth, and development for the future. And that's all I want to say, and say that I support this.
Thanks, sir. Next is Kristen Hughes. Kristen Hughes.
Hi, my name is Kristen Hughes. I'm an Amazon worker. Dog. Corporate welfare. Let me tell you, my union workers, this is what kind of jobs you're really bringing into this neighborhood. It is not well-paid. $20.50 an hour? Is that what you're making? Is that what you're working home? $40,000 a year? Is that what you're working home?
Yeah. Yes, it's directed.
I'm sorry. I'm just disappointed because I am here with my Amazon coworkers fighting for unions, and we are union busted at every single turn. And they're standing here saying that this is going to help the community. This is going to bring good-paying jobs. Amazon made $17 billion net in the first three months of 2025. They do not need Orange County's money. They're getting $20,000 in the last three months of 2024. They do not need Orange County money. We need good, fair-paying jobs for everyone, for the entire community, not just those who build it, or those who work, who show up every day and bring their bags, who are now working two and three jobs just to make ends meet. And we're supposed to be so proud that it's Amazon, that they're bringing all these great opportunities. I have no idea how many 18 and 19-year-olds I have seen break their bodies for this company and then not be able to get workers' comp fulfilled. You are not helping local residents. You are not helping people in desperate need of jobs. Do not convince yourself of that. And when you go to sleep at night, if you work for this, I hope you realize that if you are pro-Amazon, you are anti-worker.
Next is Owen Gilroy. Owen Gilroy.
Hello, my name is Owen Gilroy. I'm an Amazon worker at the fulfillment center over in Rock Tavern called SWF1. And my experience as an employee of that facility these two and a half years passed gives light to the notion that Amazon wants to move into this area to create good, stable jobs. At SWF1, I am a member of a group of like-minded employees called SWF1 United. We're working hard every shift to establish a bargaining unit inside of our building to create good union jobs. The company throws everything they can at us to prevent that from happening, whether it's cooking up bogus disciplinary procedures to harass, surveil, and intimidate pro-union employees, whether it's hiring top-of-the-line lawyers from out of state to bust our union, or whether it's trying their best to make sure that an increasing proportion of the employees in our facility are hired seasonally, making sure that they have limited chances for a raise, for job security, or for any access to benefits. Just as a personal story, I live just over the county line in Alstot County. I'm a renter. I'm renting a cabin in the woods with no indoor bathroom or shower, and I'm barely above the poverty line. Spending more than a third of my take-home pay just on rent alone in this area, never mind transportation and the other expenses. There's no chance to save money for a future until we have a bargaining unit there, which is against Amazon's imperative. If the kinds of jobs that Amazon creates with this project here in Waywayanda couldn't pay rent in this zip code above that poverty line, then I don't think the company's sweatshop ambitions should be subsidized with taxpayers.
Bring it! Bring it. Next is Valerie Johnson. Valerie Johnson.
Pull the mic, please. My name is Valby Johnson. I don't think, I don't believe that. I don't believe they should get sentenced. I'm an Amazon worker. I do not make a living wage. They do not deserve a tax break.
Next is Gordon Hoover.
Hello. My name is Laura Crower. And I actually live at Five Barcelos Street in Port Davis. I have family that lives here, family that works here on my late husband's side. This is not a good idea. It will take three to more times electricity as it does to run all the way Waywayana. And so, two, and three at SWF One. And they want to talk about the health benefits that, yeah, you get the first day as a new employee. But when you can hit that emergency room, it's three hundred dollars just to enter the emergency room. And as far as anybody that gets hurt on the job, and it's even worse for people that don't get hurt on the job. Because it doesn't matter with doctors, they have you fill out all this paperwork. And it doesn't matter what doctors you go to, they pick and choose who they're going to accommodate, who they don't. And my coworker was right. There's been somebody, at least a few people at our facility, that have been as a seasonal for about a year and a half just so they don't have to pay out their benefits. So, this is not, this is not a good idea. And this is not a rich community where you can just keep piling on taxes to these wonderful people. I'm definitely against it. Thank you.
Next is Elizabeth Miller. Did you pull that up? We're still six up. But your name is on her list. Somehow. No, but I'm gonna get it, I promise you. We have two others to go with this. I'm sorry, let's move on.
It's okay. My name is Elizabeth Miller, and I'm here on behalf of State Senator James Scupas, who proudly represents our community in the State Senate. He was denied the opportunity to call into the meeting by the IDA, so I will read his remarks. First, I want to thank all who wrote to my office to express their concern and outrage over a company valued at 2.25 trillion dollars pretending that they simply can't make this project work without robbing our community of 102.6 million dollars. This is a community that is no stranger to IDA property tax breaks. Ask taxpayers of Waywayanda and the Minnesick School District how they feel about CPV and that pilot. Ask them about Medline, the original, that pulled up its stakes and left town the minute they had to start paying full property taxes. A few months ago, I met with Amazon and told them not to mess with Orange County and not to apply for property tax breaks. They're nevertheless moving forward with a despicable twenty-year proposal on the backs of our taxpayers. So let's break this down. The proposal claims to create 750 new urban jobs in the first three years. Are these good-paying, high-skill roles that our children can train for with salaries that allow them to stay local and raise a family? No, hell no. The proposed salary for 675 of these jobs is thirty-seven thousand dollars. Thirty-seven thousand dollars. So not only would taxpayers subsidize minimum wage jobs, but they'd be stopped again by paying for those employees' food stamps, housing vouchers, and Medicaid benefits. This isn't economic development, it's corporate welfare. Let's also be clear. This warehouse is one of many currently proposed in Waywayana, but the only one seeking a property tax break from the IDA. You better believe if Amazon gets this pilot, then the other warehouses will do a 180 and put in applications to do the same. It would be stupid not to. The IDA's decision on this application will have broad repercussions on our tax base, well beyond this project. Further, I have serious concerns about the IDA's process. A few weeks ago, the IDA published a hearing notice that the developer is seeking property tax breaks. Quote, "It amounts to be established by the affected taxing jurisdictions", which is unheard of in New York County. Then a few days ago, the IDA circulates a tax break proposal seeking zero taxes to be paid for the first three years. After pushing from the IDA's state monitor, who has been keeping my office abreast, somehow we land on the twenty-year proposal for us today. We can't be certain of every conversation that's taken place. We can't be certain that the developer or even the IDA may have promised the local fire department and ambulance districts. What we can be certain of, however, is that the IDA stands to collect millions in application fees from this project alone. And you wonder why the IDA executive director is pushing this project so hard. To the construction trade workers, who have been staunch supporters of the trades for years, including working to pass your priority bill in recent days. It is unfortunate that Amazon and IDA have put the good-minded woman of the construction trades in the middle of their hostage taking. I asked the union members in the room to put themselves in the shoes of a local taxpayer and ask, "How would you feel about subsidizing Amazon to build an enormous warehouse in your backyard?"
Please, please leave your microphone down.
Two more, thirty more seconds, that's it. I know there are ways to create job opportunities for the trades without ripping off our neighbors. It happens on countless projects, many of which I've supported. In closing, if hard-working New Yorkers can pay their taxes, Amazon should be made to pay theirs. Whether this company builds their 3.2 million square foot warehouses for the town of Waywayana to decide. But enabling this kind of corporate greed is something none of us should stand for. My message to the IDA is to reject this anti-taxpayer proposal. And my message to Amazon is to pay your damn taxes.
Good evening. I'm a Middletown resident, Middletown School District. I am against Amazon in general, but I know that the meeting tonight is to really talk about the pilot and the incentives. And so, as Ms. Quinn noted, the value of local labor is important. I believe that Amazon and Spinell should have to hire locally and pay taxes to place less burden on local residents if this does go through. If it's true, as we heard from someone, that they will make more than ten million in revenue in however long, then they should definitely have to pay taxes because the amounts that were noted were way below the taxes that they would actually have to pay. And that shouldn't have to be a burden on local residents. The state, I'm not sure if everyone is aware that in other Amazon facilities throughout the state recently, including the one built in Niagara County, the state has recently denied prevailing wage rules for laborers, which involve wages set by unions and the Department of Labor. And that's for the laborers building the facilities as well as the laborers working in the facilities. So I know, you know, it could bring in these local jobs, but break after break after break that's being given, and I don't see how that benefits the community. The Public Society Board and the Labor Department in New York State were the ones who denied the prevailing wage rules for these facilities. So, you know, I think it's unreasonable that the pilot should go through because they definitely are making enough revenue that they should have to support the local economy, not just pull from it for the laborers, workers, the community. Thank you.
Hello. I'm a little bit of a veteran.
Speak up.
I don't think we should have to pay taxes for warehouses to come home. I'm in sixth grade and excited to go to Young Baptist. Did you know that the Environmental Defense Fund studies in 2023 have found that toxicity to trucks matters when it drops to harmful air pollution? Carriers' off-site emissions are also largely due to trucks. And air pollution from diesel trucks causes harm at all stages of life. Say no to the pilot.
Good luck, thank you. Next is Michael Sussman.
First of all, good evening. Thank you for adjusting the time to the hearing so that more individuals could appear in the hearing and be heard. Much appreciated. As a candidate for Orange County Executive, I strongly oppose this project. But I particularly oppose the use of taxpayer money to subsidize one of the wealthiest companies in the world. With a CEO who is now ranked number two or three in the world's wealth brigade. Now, what I've done, and I've handed up to you, is do fifteen minutes of research on Amazon. And in fifteen minutes of research on Amazon, I'm going to go through very quickly what I found. Because I think it's very important that this community, including our laborers, understand the basis of the opposition. First article is "How Amazon Hid Its Safety Crisis." This was a heavily researched article, which was published September 29th, 2020, in Reveal, which is a major investigative reporting journal. What it says, and I can't read twenty-six pages, is simply this. "A new cachet of company records obtained by Reveal from the Center for Investigative Reporting, including internal safety reports and weekly injury numbers from its nationwide network of fulfillment centers, shows that company officials have profoundly misled the public and lawmakers about its record on worker safety. They revealed a mounting injury crisis at Amazon warehouses, one especially acute at robotic facilities and during prime week and the holiday peak." This article, which I've given to you and is part of the record, explains that what robotics does is speed up what is expected of the workers who cannot keep pace with robotics and are injured on the job. Am I right?
Yes, right. That's right.
The article details in twenty-six pages of excellent reporting exactly what Amazon has in mind, which is working people don't matter to the company. Now, here's the deal. Working people in the back of the room have to stand up for the working people. That's frankly, that's what our country supports. The second article. "Amazon Seeks To Overturn Union Wedding, Says Vote Was Tainted." I was Chris Wallace's lawyer. Chris Wallace was the individual who started the organizing event during COVID at Staten Island at the Fulfillment Center. He was discharged for pretextual reasons because he was organizing a union. That violates labor law. And what does this say? The vote was fifty-five percent. We won fifty-five to forty-five at Staten Island. But what happened? That was in April of 22. Amazon, three years later, is not negotiating a contract with its union members.
That's right.
How can union members support a company like this?
I'll give you another twenty seconds, please.
All right. The record is clear. I did view the articles. There are antitrust violations, there are labor violations, there are safety violations. A company like this should never be supported by hard-working people in this sector.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, it's numbered. Okay, it's numbered. The giveaway is numbered. County's moving beyond this.
The next speaker is Holly Mosencore Wright. Sorry if I butchered that. Mosencore Wright. Holly Mosencore Wright. Please pull that mic down for me.
Hi. My name is Holly Mosencore Wright. And speaking as a business owner, there's good and there's bad anytime you're building a warehouse. It's always going to happen. However, if this project doesn't come here, it's coming somewhere else. This is already used as an active mine. By doing this, they're agreeing to doing eighty-five percent of the labor being local. We're looking at money that it can bring here. These are taxes. If you guys want for the school district to have better roads, to have a new auditorium, ask for it. That can be part of this. These taxes that it's projected, it's going to contribute over ninety million in tax revenue to the area. Go ahead and tell me schools can't use that money. So that can help everyone. There can be good within this. You're replacing what's currently an active, heavy mining operation. You're going to have a building that's going to be so much more sustainable and be able to help over years. Please don't laugh because I actually respected you and laughed for you.
Please, thank you.
It's just not right. But it's not that they're saying empty. They have plans for this. It's not saying that they're not going to pay taxes. It changes the structure of the taxes. They're still responsible for taxes. It doesn't make them just go away. So there's benefits to everyone depending on how it's done. And I'm in support.
Next is Rick DePaul. Rick DePaul.
I get to follow Sussman and Hart agree.
But we spoke earlier.
Yes.
You speak very well, so.
We spoke earlier today. Basically, I'm not for or against whatever. I'm just here to hope that the IDA uses the leverage that we have over stuff like this to get something for the school districts, to get something for the communities around. Get Greenville Park finished. Get some stuff done in Waywayana Park. I'm from the town of Minnesick. I mean, we don't have a whole lot in our town. We don't have any tax base, really, besides the single-family houses. So for us, I think the school district would be the most beneficial to receive some stuff out of this. I believe there's something called a good neighbor benefit that Amazon could do as part of this, where they could just say, "Hey, you get a million dollars for this", or "You get five hundred thousand dollars for that." The plan itself as a base, as a pilot, that's what brings these things into our communities. That's what gets these things built. It's the way it is, it's the way of the world. It's like she said, if it's not going to go here, it's going to go somewhere else. But we need to maximize the leverage that they have to get the most out of them that we can. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Next is Jason, is it Tolu?
Tau.
Tau, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Jason Tau.
Jason Tau. I'm a resident of the town of Ocean. I own a farm in Ocean. President of the Orange County Farm Bureau. And I've been a lifelong resident of the area. I believe that the residents of Minnesick, which I was a neighboring resident of Minnesick all my life, have to ask themselves, "Does the future look like the heritage of agriculture, which you tout on your sign?" Well, it may not be that. I'm not saying that Aquari is the best land use for this piece of property. But I don't believe that, as we've already heard so many times, multi-billion-dollar companies need the types of tax breaks that are forthcoming. Also, what do we really need on that site? Let's be real. Something is going to go there other than a mine someday. Right? We all wish it would be a farm again. But that's probably not reality. What could be reality? Do we want everybody that drives down eighty-four to think about, wow, they've got warehouse after warehouse after the IDA gave them incentive after incentive? Do we want to be known as Middletown Warehouse Capital of New York State, Chancis? I don't believe any residents come here and pay taxes that can look after warehouses. Sorry. I believe that there's other qualities of life, such as the farms, the rolling hills, the nice neighborhoods. That's why people come to Orange County. And for those of you that spoke tonight that it doesn't have to do with the tax incentives, everybody in this room needs to understand something. This is not going to end just with this meeting at the IDA. This has to be a bigger picture, where we include the Planning Board, the DEC, all those possible review boards. And all those things along the way add up to a big picture. In the current scene that we're in right now, we know that people in the world today can't see big picture. can't see big picture. They can only see five years down the road. And I'm a local business owner. I support unions. I'm a union member at a school during the daytime. And so I'm definitely pro-union. But there's a lot of other union jobs that are generated other than warehouse construction. And once they are here, they're here to stay. I do not support this project. I think that the IDA should make this really worthwhile for us. Because once they're here, they're here, and we're dealing with the trucks, we're dealing with the light pollution, we'll deal with it all. And it doesn't matter where in Orange County you are, we're all going to deal with it. Thank you.
Next is Alan Seidman.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity. I guess I'm stuck at a low level here. My name's Alan Seidman. I'm the former charity Orange County Legislature.
Sir, if you want to take that out, you can hold it up.
Kind of tough to open here. My name's Alan Seidman. I'm the former charity Orange County Legislature and currently the executive director of the Construction Contractors Association of Los Angeles. The issue that is faced here tonight isn't really the IDA benefits. The reason that IDA benefits are necessary, required by the high and out-of-control New York State taxes. New York State has a spending crisis that is forcing businesses to locate any place but in New York and an outward population migration. In 2024, New York ranked third among the state's network migration. If our senator doesn't want IDA benefits to help bring businesses and jobs to New York, maybe the state should work in cutting New York taxes so people can all stay and businesses will come without needing the incentives. It is a misnomer and misleading to say that the IDA is giving away taxpayer dollars. In real numbers, over twenty years, if this cycle is not developed, the owners will pay approximately a total of four million dollars in taxes. Again, four million dollars over twenty years. With the development and the IDA benefit, the owners will pay an estimated eighty-six million dollars over that same period. Are you willing to handle eighty-two million dollars, bet you that this project will be built here without the incentives? This project does not send any students to school, but it will help pay the school taxes. Other areas of our state will offer incentives. neighboring states will offer incentives. Very bad odds for an eighty-two million dollar gamble. People talk about the need for workforce housing. How about jobs for the people so they can afford the workforce housing? How about jobs for our construction workers and job opportunities for small businesses that will be building this project? Thank you.
Next is Charles Kenyatta. Is I close?
Close enough. So I'm Charles Kenyatta. I'm the chair of St. Louis, Wayway Honda. I know you don't want us to speak about this, but the truth is, the town officials, and especially Denise Quinn and John Rosano, have failed us and basically sold us out. The meaning is unwarranted, and this project is not for, is not a good thing for our town nor for our county. I don't care what Amazon or its developers put on paper. This project has far reaching negative impacts on our town, and we, the residents, know what it means to be stuck on traffic, pollution, not to mention the damaging effect that this will have on Route Six, the only access to our only school district, which we're in right now. Reality on the ground is, yesterday I was standing online to get my child to go for camp, but the school turned out hundreds of parents because the school didn't have enough funding to have all the kids come to camp. That's the reality. So for Amazon to come to our town seeking for assistance is ridiculous, and for the IDA to even consider this is absurd. You need to evaluate the potential financial advantages of a project of this size and weigh them against the sacrifices that you want to sacrifice for this project to go on. Assuming this assistance and tax breaks will be a significant injustice to our community. Thank you.
Next is Sam Frowe. Sam Frowe.
Good evening. Turn on.
Pull it right out. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Sam Frowe. I'm the business manager of Iron Workers Local 417. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here and many people are here because many of us are deeply concerned about the future of local development and, more importantly, the future of local jobs. The Orange County construction workers are the backbone of this region. Everyone calls on us when you're in need. Now, we're calling. Orange County residents are ready to work too often. They're being sidelined because projects are being delayed or blocked. We're here to say enough is enough. We fully support the Orange County Industrial Development Agency and its role in creating economic opportunity in our area. We believe in transparency, like everybody here, accountability, and in making sure that every project meets the rules. Talk about transparent, the Orange County IDA has a monitor that oversees the decisions that can alter rule. What's the issue? So now why do we act like the IDA is a guilty party for some reason on every project they consider? The bottom line is when a project does meet the requirements, it should be allowed to move forward. No games, no delays, no political interference. Unfortunately, it seems that others are making a habit of opposing projects that comply with the rules and have the potential to bring real jobs and growth to our community. That's not leadership. That's obstruction, and it hurts real people, the construction workers who depend on these jobs to support their families. When projects are blocked, it's not just steel and concrete that gets held up, it's paychecks, it's livelihoods, it's the progress our communities desperately need. We're not asking for handouts or shortcuts. We're simply asking for a fair and consistent process, one that gives local workers a chance to earn a honest living on projects that meet all the requirements. We want Senator Scoofus and all Orange County elected officials to support responsible growth and not stand in its way. We need him and all of our elected officials to stop using development as a political football, both ways. Support the IDA, support the rules, support responsible growth. It's kind of simple. If the applicant meets the qualifications, approve it. If they don't, don't approve it. People of Orange County deserve to have a functioning IDA to attract future investment in our county. There are rules. We don't need a circus created on every turn. Meet the rules or not, period. We will continue to speak out till the voices of our workforce are heard and respected, and we're not going anywhere. We'll keep showing up. We'll keep standing up. We're going to fight for what's right, no matter what the others think.
Next up is Monk Dunn.
Good evening. My name's Michael Bell, the president of Iron Workers Local 417, and I was asked to read a letter from Carl Bravonik, the Assemblyman from the 98th District.
Please pull that mic up. We can't hear you well.
So this letter is from Carl Bravonik, the 98th District Assemblyman, and he writes, "Today expressed by full, my full enthusiastic support of the proposed Amazon warehouse in the town of Wayway Honda. As the state assemblyman proud and representing Wayway Honda, I know firsthand this community welcomes responsible economic development. And this project represents an extraordinary opportunity for our town and region. This six-hundred-million investment will transform an active, heavy mining operation into a dynamic, advanced economic development hub. The five-story, three-point-two-million-square-foot facility will create seven-hundred-and-fifty permanent jobs and hundreds of local union construction jobs, providing family sustainability, employment to our residents, and supporting local skilled labor. The economic benefits to this community are undeniable. Amazon is projected to contribute ninety million in new tax revenue to the town, fire, ambulance, and school district, a nearly sevenfold increase. Moreover, considering before the direct impact of the facility and the multiplier effect of this project, an estimated twenty-four-hundred toll jobs will be supported across the region. The overall benefits to the cost of this project, the overall benefit-to-cost ratio of this project is seven to one. Clear evidence that benefit far outweigh the value. This is precisely the kind of investment our area needs. The project that replaces industrial use with modern commerce delivers substantive tax revenue to the local government, creates thousands of jobs, and signals Orange County is open for business. Sincerely, Carl Bravonik."
Next is Chris Garcia.
My name is Chris Garcia, Town Resident of Wayway Honda. Do not close the open public hearing. I do not consent to an IDA. I'm speaking to the IDA that I'm not in favor of the tax breaks for Amazon or the pilot program. This company, again, is a network of two-point-twenty-nine trillion as of June 10, 2025. Amazon wants Orange County, the town of Wayway Honda, to subsidize their new robotic warehouse. Amazon's here to extort our town, our community, over a hundred million, thus robbing money from our fire department, our first responders, our school, a much-needed funds, and our town. Our school, Mini-Sink, was offering free camp to the summer, but yesterday residents were shot out because we ran out of money. Okay? And who's going to... Who should get, and why should Amazon get a pass from taxes? Who's going to be left holding the bill for these taxes? We, the people. They should be paying us, not the town paying them. Amazon only brings short-term construction jobs, not long-term union jobs. They offer nothing to our community. What they will do is leave our landscape scarred, our town destroyed, polluted. Ninety percent of the jobs they bring to our community and town will be permanent minimum wage jobs, robotics. We would be bringing an irresponsible company to our community, and I'm not sending my child to Mini-Sink Valley School to be recruited as future labor force for Amazon. That's wild. These accidents are doomed to the green light for increased noise, pollution, twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, around the clock, around twenty-eight-hundred cars, five-hundred-and-seventy additional trucks a day. Our roads can't handle the traffic congestion on critical routes for students, commuters on Route 6, 17, 56, and local roads. I'm not living in a countryside to hear nothing but tractor-trailer noise, brake brakes, breathe exhaust. Did you ever drive down Ridgeberry Road the other day when we had the balloons at the intersection of Route 6? Did you drive down McBride? Did you steal well? Did you see the size of this thing? You're not building a warehouse. You're building a building, a massive infrastructure. This will bring nothing but increased light pollution, noise pollution, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. How are people on McBride, Hesleton Road, Stillwater Drive, Ridgeberry Road, Ridgeberry Hill, and other areas our town is going to sleep at night? Would you build this in your friend's neighborhood or backyard? I say no to any tax breaks for Amazon. What we should be building is a baseball, soccer, and hockey facility, which would bring future booming business to our town and jobs and positive infrastructure. Did you see Frozen Roads was built in a slate quarry and they used the upper area from the mine for people to watch baseball? We could do that for hockey and for Mini-Sink soccer, right? The town planning board has sold out the town. Do not touch our town's fund balance. Denise Quinn has sold out our town. John Rosano, he sold our town out. I drove down Dulson Town Road yesterday after gymnastics, taking my daughter after gymnastics. The beauty of Dulson Town Road will be destroyed. The beauty of McBride, the rolling hills, the farms will be destroyed. I know I'm close to the town of Wayway Honda because I can see the CPV smokestacks, and now I'm going to see a sister hundred-foot warehouse? And if you think about the abandoned railroad tracks, you can put rail trails in there like Phoenisha, New York, the Tapolia Railroad tracks, and they put people come, tourists, to ride their railroad tracks.
Please wrap up your talk, please.
All right.
Over your time.
So do not close the open public hearing. I do not consent to this at all. There are many other ideas you can do to build profitably, to build a future, facilities other than warehouses like the baseball, soccer.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next up is Jose Lopez. Jose Lopez, are you in the room? Okay, we'll come back to you. Next is Matt Stoddard. Mr. Stoddard.
I want to thank the IDA Board and all the people that have come out tonight. My name is Matthew Stoddard. I am the business manager of Iron Workers Local 417. And as you're listening to the Amazon workers, they're a hundred percent right. They're a hundred percent right. You're not getting paid what you should get paid.
They also aren't.
You are also, and probably being exploited. I don't know exactly what you're getting, but I know it's not what you deserve. Neither are the people that are working at Walmart, or the people that are working at Medline, or any other box store. We know what you feel like because for years and years, the building trades were outside looking in, the same as you guys were. We weren't even in there getting underpaid. We weren't allowed on the job sites. We were not on the job sites. They were bringing them from North Carolina, Tennessee, and anywhere south, bringing them up here, working, putting them in campgrounds or ten in a hotel room. And we're sitting home on the couch, we're even not making lower wages, making no wages, getting unemployment, and we all have families and we... I'm sorry, Mike. We all have families and we have children, and if we don't work, they don't eat, we don't pay the rent, and they don't have healthcare. I agree with these people. What is happening to you is wrong. I agree, and I love how the fight is. You're not wrong. But that's the same fight we had ten years ago when we were outside looking in on every one of these jobs that were going on. We found a way to get in there and get ourselves on these jobs. We found a way. Not all of them, not even half of them, but we get in there and we're doing it. And Mr. Sussman, when you said...
Where's Mr. Sussman?
Right here. That's running for office. I'm not voting for you.
I'm sorry.
But he's not wrong either, right? So he says, listen.
I am.
I'm voting for you.
So what I want to say is that he says, listen, if they're not going to be working in there, we shouldn't be working in there either.
That's right.
Well, is that right? Wait a second. Is that right?
Please hold the debate, please.
We put our asses on to get on there and figure out a way. I'll even help you if you need to come and talk, and I'll sit with you.
Yeah.
We will. I would love to.
Mr. Stoddard, keep your comments to our face, please. We don't want a battle.
But, that's right. Okay. But we got, found a way there. They should find a way there too. We're with them. We want them working.
Then don't break the line.
We're not breaking the line.
Please, please. Give me your time, please.
We're not breaking the line. We found ways to feed our families. And it's a shame that you guys aren't in there, but I wish you were. But Jesus Christ, don't stop us from feeding ours. Thank you very much, and...
Next up is Pedro Bella.
Good evening. I am president and CEO of the Orange County Chamber of Commerce. I want to educate the individuals in this room as to what a pilot program is. A pilot agreement allows a company to make scheduled payments to a municipality in lieu of additional property taxes. It is a strategic economic development tool used to attract and retain businesses, especially for large-scale and transformative projects. The IDA has a monitor in place to ensure regulation and compliance. Why are pilots valuable? Why are pilots valuable to your community? There is job creation and workforce development. It encourages large employers to invest locally, creating hundreds of good-paying jobs and benefits. It increases opportunities for local residents, reducing unemployment and underemployment. Imagine how beneficial this project will be to the local gas station, the deli, the daycare that's barely keeping their doors open. This is long-term economic growth. It is not a tax break. They are still paying taxes. They are simply on a deferment plan. This is a structured investment. Even with the reduced rates in the early years, the total tax revenue over the life of this project is ninety million dollars, exponentially greater than what would be collected under the current use of four million dollars. This is going to encourage companies to build and expand and modernize in an area they might otherwise overlook. This often includes infrastructure upgrades, new facilities, and supply chain opportunities that benefit local businesses. I spoke to you once before as a resident that actually benefited from an Amazon warehouse coming in. And at that time, I told you to make your wish list and tell them what you want. This includes performance-based benchmarks, such as job creation, local hiring, and investment levels. This allows for accountability and public benefit assurances. This organization is a proven community stakeholder supporting nonprofits, educational programs, and civic initiatives. New investments lead to increased demand for housing, services, restaurants, and small businesses, stimulating other parts of our economy. In closing, a well-crafted pilot agreement is not a handout. It is a partnership. It is forward-thinking, fiscally responsible strategy that turns untapped potential into real opportunity. Communities that embrace these tools show that they are open for business, pro-growth, and ready for their children's future. Thank you.
Nonchalant. Thank you. Next is James Pearson.
Good evening.
Take off the mic, hold it in your hand.
Put it by my hand. My name is James Pearson. I'm a resident of Orange County. I'm also a president of a nonprofit organization that exists in Hamptonburg. It's called the Ramapo Rescue Dog Foundation. And we give community service activities there, basically training canines for the New York State Police and other law enforcement agencies. And this is all a pro bono situation. Within our mission statement, the reason we got our nonprofit was that we were going to return back to the community what was given to us. As I stand here and listen to all the parties, I also realize that everybody has a need here. And it's a very passionate group in that we're stewards of Orange County, each individual here. So we have to take that responsibility quite seriously. That being said, at this point, my impression is that the Amazon project should be questioned more, should be directed more clearly to the residents and to the other individuals that are involved. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next is Alicia Alderson. You're allowed George Brett first. It's up to you.
I did one.
It's up to you.
Okay. I'd like to thank you for coming and holding the meeting tonight to listen to the residents. We have quite a few concerns in Wayway Yanda and appreciate you listening to that. Bringing an Amazon warehouse to Wayway Yanda might seem like an economic boost, but it comes with serious downsides for the community. A development of that scale could strain local infrastructure, increase traffic congestion, lead to environmental concerns, including disruption of wildlife, air pollution, increased traffic, increased accidents. Small businesses might struggle to compete, potentially shifting the town's character from locally-driven commerce to corporate dominance. While an economic boost is important to Wayway Yanda, we should weigh out these factors carefully before welcoming such a major presence. All of these concerns that we have on traffic and accidents and pollution, they're all going to cost the taxpayers money. I don't see any corporate handouts coming to the residents to try to help us with that. I don't feel Amazon should be given any extra money. If they wanted to come and build, they have more than enough money to build where they choose or where they're accepted within the guidelines of the town. They shouldn't be given any handouts either as far as waivers on height and so forth. They should follow the guidelines that our town has initially had. I don't believe that our taxes should be increased, which would happen if they get a tax pilot program. The burden shifts for the disaster they're going to make of the roads, the traffic congestion, the pollution, the health impacts of everybody. And as well, like they did mention, the people that are working there will probably need to pay for assistance or not pay for assistance. They'll probably need to apply for assistance. And again, that comes from our funding. The town residents, our taxes will be paying for that as well. I think we should encourage a business that will actually benefit the community, benefit the residents, and benefit the workers, union workers preferred. And they should be taken care of the way we would want our own families taken care of. Thank you.
I should just say, "Thank you" to all of us. My name is Georgia Alderson. I live at one-twenty-five Kirby Town Road in Wayway Yanda. I'm a proud veteran of the United States Navy and accomplished information technology professional. As a former businessman and homeowner of the town of Wayway Yanda, I'm stepping forward as a retired leader, ready to make a difference in this community. Over twenty years, I have actively driven change in my community through volunteer work, participation, and significant events in both Wayway Yanda and our neighborhood, neighboring city of Middletown. I hold prominent affiliations with several organizations, including but not limited to the same Wayway Yanda, Orange County Cares, and the Wayway Yanda Democratic Committee, where I proudly serve as chairman. I have raised my three sons here and have witnessed firsthand the evolution of our community. Many changes have benefited, benefitted... beneficial, such as the expansion of Shannon Park, the creation of our local farmers' market, the establishment of emergency medical services. However, I have also seen detrimental developments, including CPV and the ill-conceived proposal of eleven warehouses, including Amazon. I am resolute and committing to the interests of Wayway Yanda and our community. My vision is clear: to unite the citizens and restore the beauty and vibrancy of our town, where the businesses can flourish, agriculture remains strong, families thrive, without transforming our beloved Wayway Yanda into an industrial wasteland. The town of Wayway Yanda is not a decision-making office. It's a living, breathing community comprised of its residents. Thank you.
Next is Dot Winter. Dot Winter?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Dot Winter. I've lived in the town of Wayway Yanda for fifty-one years. Forty-nine years ago, we built our home, and we've been paying taxes since that time. I see no reason why Amazon Warehouse should not have to pay taxes the full bulk of whatever they want if it's approved. I am totally opposed to its approval as well. It will destroy our infrastructure. We have suffered from water problems in the town of Wayway Yanda, Hesleton Drive, for forty-nine years where we have lived. We do not have sufficient water. Many of the neighbors on the same street have two wells hundreds of feet deep. We have a three-hundred-and-four-foot well and a six-hundred-and-eighty-foot well. And we don't have enough well water to go out, to have a washing machine. We have to go out to the laundromat to use their water. In the whole of Orange County, we have many problems with water. We have many problems with pollution. When the CPV power plant was approved, there was a letter sent to the D E C asking them to investigate the street of Hesleton Drive and the town dump, which is located right behind the town hall of Wayway Yanda. Many persons have contracted cancer and died on our street. The D E C declined to investigate on the recognition of Dan Myers, whose father was a town doctor. And many persons in Wayway Yanda are aware of what the Balchem Corporation did to Wayway Yanda by dumping behind the town hall casks of...
Ms. Winter, I have a minute or two. Can you bring your comments back to the subject at hand, which are the incentives for Amazon?
The incentives for Amazon should not be granted. We will be paying for a new water system for the entire community if they are approved. At some point, they will pollute, and we will suffer the consequences as taxpayers rather than Amazon. I recommend that you continue this hearing, that you do not offer them all of these incentives. They don't deserve it. They're a huge corporation. Jeff Bezos is about the third wealthiest person in the world. And CPV was given an incentive program, a twenty-year pilot. So was the Medline Warehouse, and they both didn't deserve it. And Medline moved out and moved on from Montgomery, where they established themselves. Fortunately, they didn't get...
Please wrap up.
They didn't get their tax incentive because James Goof has worked and opposed it. So I say no to this warehouse and say it is a destruction of the community.
If you have any comments, please keep your comments to the incentives, please. Again, planning board is coming up. The C P V is coming up. There are other venues for those comments. But thank you. Mr. Winter. Great winter, please, next.
Thank you. I think as I have served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam situation, I believe in democracy. I think our democracy right now is suffering some serious things. I think it's very important that the IDA consider many things for all the people that have spoken, for the union people, for the people that don't believe that the warehouse, as you can see, I'm not a fan of the warehouse. One of the things I find very disconcerted about is the town of Wayway Yanda does not show us what will be positive for us, what will be negative here. We're hearing some things today, which is good. I'm not a fan of this warehouse. I think there will be other things for the construction workers to do if this doesn't get approved by the IDA. And I think you should concern, be very concerned. Water problems, okay, we have that. That's a personal thing. But I think, I don't know who's going to provide the water for Amazon there. Is it going to be Middletown? I lived in Middletown. I grew up in Middletown. I was born in Middletown. And I find that Middletown, as far as I know, has not changed only three reservoirs. Are they going to have enough water? And I think the IDA should consider that. And whatever happened when Orange County was working through an idea of setting up some more water shields, actually, over here in the town of Wayway Yanda, was one of them was considered. But it never, it just disappeared. So where are we going to be with the water? That's a serious problem. If people don't have water, people cannot survive. That's a simple thing.
Any other comments on the incentives?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm going to end it right here. I think the town of Wayway Yanda did not do the job they should have done. They should have explained this before. We've been going through this and going through this and going through this. And I can't support a warehouse that pays people almost a little bit above their minimum wage, and they won't have unions. And then you've got union people. And I've worked in construction. I've been a construction manager. And I've done lots of construction work. And I certainly hope that it goes on for the workers. But as far as I'm concerned, I think this Amazon warehouse is not correct for the town of Wayway Yanda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Next is Nicholas Moran.
Hi, this is, I'm Nicholas Moran. I work at Amazon SWF One in Rockin Tavern, which got some tax breaks from the Montgomery IDA. In my experience, my three years of experience at Amazon, they have a lot of good PR. They're a big union busting company that destroys my coworkers' bodies, defunds our communities, and destroys our environment. At every turn, they have tried to union bust, retaliate, intimidate me and my coworkers, who look out for each other. Because I work with people who are homes. I work with people who sleep in their cars and go to Medline and work night shift. I work with people who can't afford their cars, that leave their cars, live in their cars, that can't afford their cars because they lose them. People end up going to food banks. And this is the kind of taxing status we want to give to this company, you know? And they don't want you to stick around. Three years is pretty much the max. I can make twenty-two dollars and sixty cents right now. Starting wage at Amazon is twenty dollars and fifty cents. But they say, oh, you get benefits on day one. That is a lie. So far, they have kept our seasonal coworkers as seasonal for over a year. And they don't follow the law. They're too fit for the law. They're too fit. No one's going to hold them accountable. So what they do is they like bring in outside-employed workers. I was on the P L N with Teamsters when they were building the building in SWF One, where I work now. And I made forty-four thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty-nine dollars last year. That's for four taxes. And a lot of hospitals around the area, they know my coworkers. They know SWF One. They see them in the emergency room. They see them at physical therapy. And Amazon fights tooth and nail. I have many coworkers that have left the warehouse for years on end because they've been hurt, because they were pushed to break. And we've got to remember that Amazon is not just a warehousing company. It does a lot of different things. They are a surveillance company. The surveillance, the amount of surveillance in that warehouse is truly, I don't think people get what it's like to work in that warehouse, you know, day in and day out. This is not a company you want to let come into your communities. And let's be frank, they're going to put it somewhere in Orange County. Let's be real. It's a logistics. They need to get their stuff in two days to the consumer. That's their promise. And they want to do it even faster. And that means destroying me and my coworkers' bodies. As we fight for a union, I hope you come out and support us when we go out on the picket line, when we need your support. Because this company, they will not stop. They want more and more. They made record profits, twenty billion dollars last quarter of 2024, and they're going to go for more next quarter. This year, they made already seventeen billion dollars, and they won't stop at anything. They don't care about the rules of law. So I urge the IDA to reject this pilot program. They can afford to pay their fair share of taxes if not put on the backs of workers or residents of Orange County.
This is Shellus Hudson. Michelle, I'm sorry.
It's okay, my name is Shellus Hudson. I live in Newburgh and I work at SWF-1. Talking about the incentives. You want to give Amazon incentives to monopolize and bully over people. Currently, they just spread it, what is it, four hours straight? You work four hours straight, no breaks. This is the company that y'all want to give incentives to? They want to push the older community until their bodies is completely broke down and they can't do anything about it. You're talking about making opportunities for the younger people. Well, we're talking about a robot factory. You're not talking about a regular Amazon. This is a five-story tall robot factory. Thank you for the time. So it's going to be predominantly robot arms and machines with wheels rolling things around. It's not going to be much humans, though. It's going to be a few high-paid IT technical guys that make a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year at minimum. But I can guarantee most of you guys that your young children that don't have what they need to get the certain skills that they desire, they're not going to get it done. They bring outside management in. They bring children fresh out of college that's part of the Amazon school program to be the managers over these places. So you're thinking that this tax break is going to create something for this community, and I'm here to tell you that it's not. They won't even bust people from town to town to get there. You're talking about repairing the roads? We live in a town where none of the roads are repaired. We live in a town where the roads are so messed up that it messes up the shocks on your vehicle. And this is the place that you're talking about giving these incentives to? Construction workers behind me? I've done construction work for twenty years. If y'all don't break grounds on this, guess what? You still going to eat. So at the end of the day, I want y'all to really strongly consider everything. Community, I want y'all to keep fighting those that are fighting. Those who don't want to fight, y'all really need to take a real good look on the enslavement that they make out of multi-people. Not just a certain group of people, but multiple people are enslaved. People that had, that leave their nursing professions. People that used to do construction now work at Amazon and they slaves and they trapped. They won't even allow us to have a union. You're talking about incentives, right? You're going to give them incentive money to send union busters in, to tear us down, to enslave us because we can't have a union like the construction workers? Right? We say no to these people wanting to come to this town.
Mrs. Vanessa Sitt.
Hello, good evening. I'm a labor organizer for the menu in partnership with Teamsters Local 445.
What's your name?
Vanessa Sitt. Since we cannot talk about all the environmental impacts this will cause for the union busting they're doing at two facilities in our area and one other across the river, I'll start with saying in no way should you all consent to this pilot. Amazon workers do not make a living wage. Their very own workers cannot make ends meet. And you want to give this multi-billion dollar company a tax break? Shame. Last Sunday, I was in DC and I heard from parents in Arlington about how Amazon has taken control of their small school fairs and replaced them so that the items they're selling in the school don't go back to the school. They go back to Amazon. With this being said, I don't believe that they should be given another break more. Today, Senate Bill S-4658 passed heading to the governor's desk for her sign. This bill relates to the prohibition of the use of funds, financial incentives, or subsidies to large multinational corporations to build storage and warehouse facilities. Are you all aware of this and trying to get ahead of it is certainly a holdout?
This is Michael Martin. Michael Martin.
Good evening. Michael Martin from Minnesota. I just want to tell you guys, I work for big paper companies that have big paper mills. You guys down south, Texas, Louisiana, Maine, Amazon is scamming. When these, when paper mills and facilities go down there, even today, those towns make them pay. The ambulance, they need an ambulance corps because they have to respond within five minutes because of motion regulation. They're scamming you to pay for ambulances. They're scamming you to pay for fire departments. Most of the time, down south, they make those companies pay ninety percent of that cost. They don't ask for tax incentives. You guys are being scammed. One hundred million dollars? Take that one hundred million dollars and give it to companies that bring in jobs that build plants that these union workers can work out and people can make decent living wages. Help these people get to jobs that give them living wages. And your union people in the back, these are your brothers. You shouldn't be a parent. You should be out there in front of Amazon with them, helping. Shame. One hundred million dollars? What are you going to do with it? Why don't you, we need a four-year university here. Take that and make it for a state money, put a state campus here. If New York State has to build another university somewhere, go to them, say, we got a hundred million dollars. We'll kick in with you. We'll build a university. These guys are going to build their dormitories. They'll be building school buildings. You go up to any university in the state of New York, they're building for years. Lots of jobs, lots of construction jobs, lots of union jobs, good-paying jobs. Education for these people to get ahead, to go into science fields and really make something of themselves. One hundred million dollars is a scam. You guys got scammed by the CPC private. You go to other states in other locations, those people are paying a million dollars, or sorry, twenty million dollars in taxes rather than one million dollars. You're being scammed.
Mrs. Bone Watts.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for holding the meeting at a decent time. I'm here to tell you that I don't think any incentive should be given to a multi-billion dollar corporation like Amazon. You have to be insane to even think about it. There are no benefits going to be brought into this area by this corporation. There are no benefits that our children will see in this school district. It's all a ruse. It's been this way for years. It's got to stop. The corruption and the illegalities that are going on amongst these corporations has got to stop. We, the residents, are the ones suffering. Not you, the investors, that are going to make something from this. Like this gentleman said, there are people living in their cars in the parking lot at that facility because they have no roof over their head. Can you feel good about sleeping at night? About giving this corporation that wants to give us nothing at all? Just promises and lies? I've been in the system for too long to know that your money does us no good. We don't want no IDA money. We don't want no school money. We don't want any money that you think they're giving as a pilot program. This facility is not a friendly facility. It is not friendly to its residents. It is not friendly to its towns. It has a past history that you should examine and learn about if you don't know. And I think that this project should be kicked down the road and put somewhere else. A town of seven thousand four hundred and forty-four people should not have a massive facility that benefits absolutely nothing to the residents. What it offers to the town, I don't know. We never had an ambulance before. We didn't need it. We always got to the hospital. Now we have truck traffic. We can't even get to the hospital. All you're doing is ruining the infrastructure of this town. And they definitely do not need our money, or Orange County Partnership's money. It's got to stop. And I think the stop should be here.
One more chance for Jose Lopez. Okay. Next speaker is Vincent Rojos. Vincent?
Good evening. My name is Vincent Rojos. I serve as the executive director for the Town Montgomery Industrial Development Agency. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in support of this Amazon project.
We can hear you too well if you bring it closer. Thanks, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight in support of the proposed Amazon project in the town of Wayyanda. With Amazon having one of the facilities in the town of Montgomery, I can confidently speak to the real and measurable benefits this company brings to the local economy. In Montgomery, Amazon has proved to be a valuable partner of our business community and has contributed significant investment to our town. Let me share some numbers with you. In the past year, which is year four of the fifteen-year pilot, the Amazon facility in Montgomery contributed over seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in property tax revenue, with four hundred and seventy-nine thousand going right to the school districts. By the end of that pilot, that total amounted to more than two million dollars in direct payments to our taxing jurisdictions, dollars that support our schools, emergency services, and vital infrastructure, which this project will far exceed those numbers for the town of Wayyanda. Beyond that, Amazon currently employs around nine hundred people in the town of Montgomery, with upwards of twelve hundred people during the holiday season. That's nine hundred to twelve hundred local residents and neighbors with steady paychecks, healthcare, 401K, and opportunities for advancement through their internal career and management development programs. And Amazon pays payroll taxes for those employees, for each and every one of those employees. Aside from the taxes generated and jobs created, each one of those employees spends their earnings in our community. Whether it's grabbing breakfast at a local deli, fueling up at our gas stations, or shopping at our small businesses, which these employees help generate significant sales tax revenue for the town and the county. That ripple effect supports countless local jobs, businesses, and keeps our local economy growing. In fact, the 2023 New York State Council of Representatives approves and shows that for every dollar of incentive given by an IDA, it generates seven dollars in taxes to the local community. These are factual numbers. It's easy to cherry pick the tax-saving numbers Amazon may receive through the 98 incentive package, but the truth is, these are tax dollars that never existed in the first place. These are not existing taxpayer dollars being given out as a handout. And it does not put the tax burden on paying residents in the town. Without this project, there's no new revenue, no jobs, no economic activity. The land stays underdeveloped and underutilized. This project with the pilot will generate roughly ninety million dollars in taxes for the town of Wayyanda and the visiting school district over the course of the pilot, versus only four million dollars if the project does not move forward. IDA incentives allow New York State to remain competitive against other states that have a much less tax and regulation burden on businesses. IDA itself attracts and encourages smart, strategic investment and promotes job creation. That's exactly what this is. This project would be the most advanced robotic process designer in the country that will employ over seven hundred and fifty people. It's also truly important to note that any project that receives IDA tax incentives are held accountable for job creation numbers and also must comply with the IDA's local labor policy, which requires any IDA project to hire a minimum eighty-five percent of local labor to build and construct these projects, preventing them from bringing out-of-town labor for far less wages and undermining our local labor, which is a significant portion of our community, and their hard-working tradesmen that rely on these construction jobs to help put food on the table for their families.
Another ten seconds, please, sir.
The IDA tax incentives help unlock private development that wouldn't happen otherwise, and in return, our community sees a far greater long-term investment than short-term savings any company might receive. Without a strong business community
Ms. Lopez, I think I cut you out. I'm sorry. Be respectful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Todd Deoria. Todd Deoria.
My name is Todd Deoria. And I'm the president of the Hudson Valley Building Construction Trades Council. Represent twenty-nine local trade locals and about seven thousand members, a lot of them living in the county of Orange. And at essence of time, we had a lot of other people, tradesmen that wanted to speak. You see them back there. We told them not to. We're covering a lot of it as union reps. So we could have brought, dropped this out till midnight tonight. And we're, at essence of time, we're not going to do that. Jobs, I want to talk about a couple of things. And I took some notes, so I'm a little over my original thoughts here. Jobs during construction, we're looking at a thousand tradesmen at peak. And we're looking at one million plus union construction hours. That means about a hundred million dollars in union wages and benefits during this project. Probably the largest construction project that we've built in Orange County. And the policy, eighty-five percent local labor. So we're guaranteed that eighty-five percent of the people on that project will be from the local communities. I'm going to skip the jobs after construction because the numbers are all over the map on what people are really getting paid and what they are. And with all due respect to you guys, as Matt said, we'd like to talk to you, maybe come in and talk to the building trade and see how we can work to get you guys some better wages, whatever we have to do. We have a lot of organizing campaigns going on. The economic impact. One sec?
That's okay.
I'm not breaking the law. Five hundred million in construction costs will have about a billion-dollar impact on the local community. And everybody's missing here, and they're misinformed a little bit. Nobody's giving Amazon money. Amazon's actually going to be paying money. And some important numbers. If this project is not developed, it'll be four million dollars over twenty years. If it's developed with the pilot, this is a twenty-year pilot, it's a hundred and three million, sixty-five million to the school over twenty years. And on the twenty-first year, nine million a year for the school district. That's a lot of money. And on the twenty-first year, over twelve million in total taxes. And again, we have to take this into mind. I know everybody's not a big fan of Amazon and how they maybe treat people. But regardless of who the applicant is, they are entitled to the same benefits under the IDAs. And we need the IDAs to keep us competitive, as somebody said before, with New York. New York is a tough place to do business. I see it all the time. I've had personal deals with Amazon during this for the last two and a half years with the developer. They are looking at other sites, one in Jersey, one in upstate New York, and another one in Orange County. A lot of the anti-pilot speakers that I spoke about, just I don't think everybody understands and they realize that we're not giving people money.
You don't understand.
Please, please, sir.
We're going to increase taxes by a hundred million dollars. And again, I want to defend the supervisor who is out there fighting again for whatever she can get. She knows this project is probably going to happen. She's working hard with the IDA to get community benefits. And the town board, the planning board, and the zoning board. They have put Amazon or the developers' scandal through the hoops on this. I mean, they have crossed every T, dotted every I. This has been going on for three years. Lastly, I'm very disappointed with our local Senator Goufis's stance and his persuasion, political play on this. He's been a friend of mine, a personal friend of mine. But he's already won his political battle in Albany and he got a monitor appointed to and he got a monitor appointed to the IDA. Let the appointed monitor veto the pilot if Amazon doesn't meet the guidelines. And again, somebody keeps talking about us. We are local taxpayers. And I mean, like I said, Amazon has some... So we are in total support. My guys need these jobs. It's important. We're talking about a million man-hours. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Connor Reckert, president and CEO of the Orange County Partnership. I'm here tonight to speak in support of this project for a few reasons. And I think when we work on a project of this scale, it's critical that we approach it from a data-driven perspective, this scale, this velocity. And I want to give context first. So the project, I think, makes sense because we are redeveloping an active, heavy industrial site into a modern, high-tech innovation site, I would say. One of the most high-tech supply chain logistics facilities in the country, as someone said to me. But from a data-driven perspective, if this project moves forward, we will see accumulated direct and indirect jobs in construction permanent of 2,427 jobs. And that means indirect, when we say indirect, that means supporting service workers, small businesses, gas stations, cafes, coffee shops. It's gonna stimulate the surrounding economy, not just the direct jobs. But direct jobs, we're talking with minimum 750 and hundreds of well-paying construction jobs building this facility. Now, when you look at the cost-benefit analysis, and this is a critical piece, you're looking at local and state benefits that have been tabulated by a third-party analyst to $856 million as opposed to the cost of the incentives, which are around $116 million. That's a seven-to-one benefit-to-cost ratio, meaning the benefits of this project outweigh the cost of the incentive by sevenfold. Now, industry standards, anything better than one-to-one is a good deal for the community. Seven-to-one is substantial. Now, when you look at, again, the context of the site, right? You're looking at $12 million in investment in off-site improvements to expand and improve the existing road conditions in the community. You're looking at a $600 million investment, perhaps the largest job-creating investment in the history of the county. And I have the pleasure of doing economic development, and we work with different companies every day. And there is intense competition for projects of this scale across the country, particularly in the Northeast. Now, when you look at markets like Orange County, we're very similar to Lehigh, Hartford, Connecticut, northern Delaware. You're looking at exit A to Jersey and Mauna. These are competitive markets, high-end industrial markets that service the same consumer markets. Therefore, these incentives, from a Northeast perspective, become critical to secure projects. But we're also competing with projects with states that offer incredibly low taxes, sometimes free land out of shovel-ready sites. So the incentives are absolutely mission-critical to attract these projects. So in closing, I see a benefit-to-cost ratio that is substantially larger than the cost by sevenfold. I see a $600 million investment. I see a catalytic investment that creates over 2,000 direct and indirect jobs. It puts local men and women to work. Amazon offers career advancement opportunities by way of workforce benefits. Amazon Career Choice, including partnerships with SUNY Orange. So all in, this is a catalytic job-creation project that gets the community back in working and also sparks our economy from construction, a tax revenue, and a permanent job-creation perspective. $90 million in new taxes over the course of the pilot that's worth $4 million if this project does not move forward. That's $4.5 million in new taxes every year over the life of the pilot. That's a substantial shopping yard, and might I add, in closing, the fire district and the ambulance district are exempt from the pilot. That's full boat taxes and public services equating in all to $90 million over the course of 20 years. That's new money in the community and critical for growth. Thank you, Melissa Vance's brother.
Thank you. Next up is Tom Gablebeady.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tom Gablebeady. I was born and raised in the Hudson Valley. And after graduating high school, I joined a local construction union. I was able to raise my family on construction jobs just like this one. I've attended many of these public hearings as an apprentice and throughout my career, supporting these projects. And I can tell you that I was raised with these projects and I was able to raise my family with these projects. Now, through my job, I attend many career and job fairs at local high schools all throughout Orange County. We encounter hundreds of high school seniors that are looking for opportunities. We are looking to give these high school graduates opportunities in the construction field, and projects like these are what make it happen. So I'm proud to say that I support this project. I support the IDA incentives that it entails. And I appreciate the work that you guys do. So here I have, from the letter from Assemblyman Brian Maher, I would just like to read a little portion of what he wrote. "It is very natural to think of one of the richest men on the planet and ask why Jeff Bezos needs a tax break. I think we all agree that he does not. The devastating business climate in New York State is to blame for the necessity of financial incentives being used to attract some large-scale developments to our communities. The development community is watching this process. We want development that are advanced manufacturing or high-tech opportunities. We all want higher-paying jobs. Those types of businesses will be more likely to come to Orange County if they know the process by which their projects are approved, are built on trust, truth, and good faith." This is what's happening with the business climate. If projects like this are run out of town, we're gonna lose other manufacturing jobs that potentially could be coming here in the future. So I'm proud to say, I've worked here, I've worked on these projects, I've attended many of these meetings, a lot of them. There's a lot of controversy. But myself and many construction workers in this room and thousands of construction workers in the Hudson Valley benefit from projects like this. Thank you.
Next is Jeff DiOrio.
Good evening. My name is Jeff DiOrio from Old Seventeen Laborers. I'm the business manager, and my job is to put food on the table for my members. There's no doubt in my mind that this project will do that for me, other trades, and the local taxpayers that live here. This project will only help the area with jobs, full-time and part-time. That's a project with 750 jobs with good starting pay, benefits included. Beyond that, Amazon is our friend. They donate to many causes, pay a lot of money in taxes to towns, fire districts, and schools. Everyone loves to place an order with Amazon and have it delivered within one day, but don't wind it in their backyard. They were built here or Pennsylvania. Let's not push them in that direction. And I am in support of the pilot program. Thank you.
Next is Chris Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Chris Harrison. Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak. I work for advanced testing or a local oil testing inspection firm. Been in Orange County for about 40 years. And we have 175 employees, many of which who live in Orange County. We're here to support the project. We believe that... It's hard to go left towards the end, because you've heard all the good stuff. But just to reiterate, the jobs, the loss of $80 million if we do not bring this project here. Looking at the other renovation projects in the area, I think that this is vital to bring something to the community that's gonna be beneficial and bring the taxes. So, thank you, guys. Thank you for your opportunity.
Next speaker is Randolph Hurst.
Yes, good evening. My name is Randolph Hurst. I'm a disabled veteran. I also served during the Vietnam War and the first '67 Arab Israeli war. And I'm a resident of Wayyanda for over 40 years. First of all, I'd like to point out that this is not a responsible growth project. And John Rosano, Denise Quinn have sold us out during the CPV project and so did the IDA, and they're doing the same thing again. Karbor Rabanak does not speak for or represent the welfare of his constituents or this community. Having said that, I want to say this. I find it inconceivable and abhorrent that Amazon, a $2.25 trillion corporation that grows $59 billion in 2024, is asking the taxpayers of this tech county to subsidize their warehouse project with millions of our taxpayer dollars. In addition to this, Orange County, the Wayyanda taxpayers will be responsible for costs, for infrastructure support, road repair, emergency response, and so much more. It is not enough that the IDA and the Wayyanda Republican administration in this town betrayed Orange County residents and the tech people of this town with CPV, a frac gas power plant that emits millions of tons of toxic carcinogenic greenhouse gases annually, jeopardizing the health and welfare of all Orange County residents and exacerbating climate change. Now, we are asked to support a project that will add 2,800 vehicles to 570 diesel tandem trucks daily that will further harm our family's health and lives and increase climate change, not to mention the safety of our children who are gonna be going to school on the buses on these roads. You know, supporters tell us that this project is about jobs. These jobs that they're talking about are temporary jobs. They build this project, and they're out of here. Why not build grocery stores? We don't have a decent grocery store in this town. People have talked about things that they could build and stay in. Daycare, senior housing, affordable housing, that's what's needed in Orange County, not an Amazon warehouse. I do not support this project. I ask you to not support it. Amazon does not need or deserve tax abatements of pilot, sales tax exemptions, and this project should never be built in this town. It should not be built in Orange County. Take it elsewhere.
Next is Joseph Finer.
Hello, how are you? My name is Joe Finer, and I live locally in Wayyanda. I'm a real estate developer and local landlord, blue-collar kind of guy. For the carpenters back there. I oppose the tax incentives, though. Out of all the houses I flipped and built and rented out, I had to pay taxes, income taxes, property taxes on every single one of them. So I don't believe that just because they're a big corporation, Amazon, they should get a break. A family member, not too close, but they built Catlin Creek. They got a pilot. And I'm not sure if you guys are aware what the pilot really is, but they had to pay property taxes for a pretty long time on that, around Catlin Creek. But I suggest, just like every other person has to pay taxes, property taxes, whether they're a war veteran or a senior citizen on fixed income, they still have to pay. As far as Amazon, guys, they're probably coming regardless. So we should make it where they don't have to pay as many taxes. They're gonna come. They're a big corporation. If they want to be here, they're gonna be here. As far as enticing them, you know, there's two sides to every story. It seems like beside the carpenters, they go, we want to entice them and give them the incentive so that they come here, they don't go elsewhere. Guys, they're coming here as a strategic location because of the amount of consumers in this area. They're not coming here because, oh, they're gonna give us a tax incentive.
Certainly, you threw up your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that's what I'm saying. They're not gonna come here as a tax incentive. They're still gonna come here. So the IDA, you're playing poker with Amazon. You're gonna say, no, we're not giving it to you. We're taking the full revenue, and we know you're still gonna come here. You're not gonna tell them that to the face, but that's exactly what's gonna happen. As far as Amazon, do they deserve this tax incentive, this break? I don't think so. This isn't a manufacturing facility paying people $30, $35 an hour. This is moving around packages. This is people making $17 to $23 an hour. You cannot become a homeowner from that. It's not prosperous wealth from that. The whole thing with the pilot is to reward a company for bringing in higher-paying wages so wealth can be dispersed throughout the community. That's not gonna happen here. A lot of these people that are gonna be working here are gonna prob... They're not gonna be able to afford to buy a house. They might split a two-bedroom apartment. Split. They're not gonna be able to afford to rent an apartment on their own. So the fact that this reward that you guys have, and you do have a reward, and they qualify for it, it should be per perspective. Who is the best candidate? What are you gonna be paying your people? What is in the history of your company? And is Amazon still probably gonna come? Yeah, they are, even if we don't give them the tax incentives. So you might as well take the tax revenue and go on with it. And that's why I say, by the way, I already get my packages in one day anyways. And I have this door open now, and I'm fully loaded. See what the heck is, you know? You're gonna build it anyways if you're a mono. This is the Incredible Hulk, Mr. Little Mouse. And that's all. Thank you.
Next up is Jacob Lake. Okay, we'll move to Pramila Mudd.
Is it possible to turn off the AC down? I'm like freezing.
It is chilly. It's helpful up here, but...
My name is Pramila Mudd. I'm the chair of Tech Orange County. Connor, we're not an industrial market. We are protected agricultural and residential district. So let's just clear that up. My group objects to using our tax dollars to give corporate welfare to Amazon, a $2.2 trillion company. And I would like to know from the IDA and Amazon, why... Pardon? So, I need you closer?
Yes.
Okay, so I need to hold it. So I would like to know from the IDA and Amazon, why the rush? Could it be that most residents who will be directly impacted don't know about this yet? At the May 14 public hearing, residents could not enter the town hall to even hear or listen, level of participation. But the planning board, under pressure from Amazon, closed the hearing anyway. Last week, Amazon was pressuring the board to issue a net debt for a 3.2 million-square-foot warehouse that now wants to use 9.5 megawatts of power from CPG in Port, requiring a new substation transmission line. That is three times the power used by all of Wayyanda. All with no environmental incentives. No real setting of pollution, noise, traffic, and most importantly, power consumption and its impact on the grid and its combined impact along with truck traffic and air quality. This IDA is the same body that gave tax subsidies to CPV, a company that distracts $189 million annually from ratepayers. That is us, without even glance at the environmental impacts. As a result, it's gone from a moderate ozone-area system to a severe ozone area, with air quality now being as bad as for exhuming. And we have documented that people are indeed getting sick. You heard from Randy, he's one of them. Firm is another. The IDA, now Amazon is peddling a false claim that it is in that benefit without any consideration of the real socialized cost as well as individual costs. According to the incentives, the average household income in Wayyanda is $150,000. 90% of these jobs will be at, what, $15 to maybe $20 an hour? That's $37,000 to $41,000 annually? They can't afford to live here. Where will they live? They'll need subsidized housing. And indeed, at that income, all of their basic needs will be subsidized by taxpayers: food, housing, healthcare, and most importantly, education. Now, it costs an average of $19,000 a year to educate a child. If a third of these workers put children in school, who will pay for that? The residents, of course, taxpayers. Healthcare. The total pollution of 570 tax per day, not counting cars, is about 3.5 million pounds of CO2 emissions annually. Greenhouse gases mean pollution. And pollution causes asthma, heart disease, lung cancer, and premature deaths. It costs $3,000 to $7,000 per year to treat a child with asthma. And now, add to that CPV pollution of 2.1 million tons of CO2 annually, asthma rates will rise exponentially.
Ms. Bell, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up and not to mention bringing back the incentives, please.
Well, I don't get it. You have to weigh cost versus... You have to weigh cost versus benefit, and you're not looking at the cost. That's what I'm talking about. So who will pay for that? Who will pay for that child with asthma? And indeed, a university study on CPV similar pollution found that it costs $900 million per year in healthcare costs and infrastructure damage per a year.
In ten more seconds, please.
By that analysis, Amazon's warehouse will cause society $670 million annually in healthcare costs and infrastructure damage. So I say no Amazon, no frac Amazon.
Next is James Ruiz.
Hello, my name is James Ruiz. I live in Hurley Town Road. Things I wanted to talk about. I want to talk about how this is corporate welfare at best and class warfare at worst. A 20-year pilot for $100 million is absolutely ridiculous, especially with everyone else that has spoken, especially the union workers. Amazon is the wealthiest company, is one of the wealthiest companies within the United States. Their current net worth is roughly $2.3 trillion as of June 8th of 2025. To afford this tax break, taxpayers will be paying all the real costs for infrastructure support, emergency response, and probable need. And it should be known that Amazon is not a pro-union company. They're well-known for union busting and working conditions for Amazon workers that are extremely exploitive, as heard from the other union, as heard from the other Amazon employees currently working in Amazon warehouses. Do not bring this, do not bring these kinds of jobs here. They are not, they are known to be anti-trust and anti-union. No Orange County resident should have to face this level of workplace exploitation. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Healy. Chris Healy?
Take your time, sir.
Hold on, come on down.
Price is wrong. Good evening, my name is Chris Healy. I'm president of Town Negotiations. I'm old enough to remember the original intent of the Industrial Development Agency to bring in, incentivize businesses to come to Orange County and build. As I look at this project, the incentive's in the ground. It's already there. It's location, location, location. As a previous speaker did mention, this is about logistics. Amazon, aside from not needing the money at all, needs the location. Giving them any money means nothing to them, but it means everything to the residents of Wayway onda. $100 million is their lunch tab. But $100 million to the residents is infrastructure, it's fires, police, it's road repair. We are talking about corporate welfare, and they just don't need it. You're shifting the burden of running a town, the cost, you're shifting it off of these businesses to the residents. It hurts us. It hurts everyone in Orange County when you do this, and it's unsustainable. Every dollar that you forgive a corporation from paying is money you're stealing from the town. It's theft.
Next up is Julie Casal. Julie Casal?
Good evening, thank you. I just want to say that the Amazon project is very short-stated. Many of the Amazon workers, the ones that they bragged about might be seasonal. A lot of them are nomadic. They come, they go, they don't get a good salary, they don't get healthcare. They use our services. They're going to drain our police, our fire, our hospital, our urgent cares. They're just going to be attacked on our systems. Amazon's competed with our local and small business stores. They've driven out a lot of our businesses. That will continue. Giving them unearned tax breaks to a billionaire who wants for absolutely nothing will leave our roads, our resources congested, our pollution neglected, and the detriment of our county. We will be subsidized by Bezos and Amazon, the empire, at our local expense. I don't want to pay taxes. Who do I talk to? And I certainly don't want to pay Jeff Bezos' taxes and subsidize him. He's got the rocket ship to nowhere. He's got drones, robots, and AI newspaper, and he's censored a lot of his journalists. He does nothing for the town, our community, or our country at this point. He's bought presidential access, and he's going to get more tax breaks from him. We don't need this.
Next on the list is Alice Duro.
I'm Alice Duro, and I live in the town of Waukesha. And I think this should be, no, they should not get any tax breaks. They shouldn't even come here because they're not going to do anything for the area. Just making a mess. I mean, we heard people talking how bad the workers are treated. They're not union. There is no good benefit for this company coming here, and certainly not to get tax breaks. Thank you.
One last call for Jacob Lake.
I wasn't called. I wasn't called.
Do we have a last list?
He was under my name.
Two more names up on this list over here. We'll have you come up anywhere. Your name was?
Leslie Haynes.
And it was up here earlier?
Yes.
Okay, please come on. You're the board, and we'll hit these last few people.
I want to thank the IDA for answering my questions. I called because I had a lot of questions, so I appreciate that, taking the time to do that. I do have another question about why we are having this hearing now when the planning board and the zoning boards of Wayway onda have not approved this project? Because we do have to talk about what the project is about before giving them the money. So that's a little confusing to me. I have a house that's 250 years old. I hope it will be here for another good amount of time. But now I'm worried because we will have a different character to our community. 24/7, just imagine, 24/7 people working in your community, not even a mile from my house. What this will do? The noise, the light pollution, the traffic. I mean, they will be going on my little road for sure. I also see this project, unfortunately, as a gateway, a warehouse gateway. There are eight more warehouses in a dump, transfer station, maybe you don't know it, that are right behind this, that will feed off of this project. We need to consider that. If Amazon is supposed to be so good for our area, why have a hidden project until about a month ago? And they used the code name Bluebird. Non-disclosure was not because they were afraid of competition, but because they were afraid that we would see them for who they are, which I believe is to take advantage of us. Amazon finds towns that are susceptible to their control and takeover and secretly work behind the scenes. I've been doing a lot of AI stuff on my computer, and I've learned a lot. There seems to be no concern for the impact or for the benefits for the community. They proved this again and again right here by asking for huge tax cuts, even before they're approved by the town. Back in March, they asked for $120 million and reduced taxes in ways that only benefit them. The only other idea I heard is that they might subsidize an ambulance day, which I now found out that they need for usher appointments. We are supposed to help build their business. In return, we get jobs that treat people in inhumane ways until they're totally taken over by robots. They're shoving a mass of projects down our throats very quickly. There are so many problems with this proposal, and one of the biggest is it's smoke and mirrors. What assurance do we have that what they propose will be fulfilled? Are they signing a contract? Is there anything in my paper for this, saying that they will do this? I know that it's been mentioned that there's a monitor. I'm not sure how that plays into it, but for 20 years, that's a lot of monitoring. They will get their money, and there is nothing, I feel like, that binds them, that we can see. So basically, they can say and claim anything they want and take the money and run. And I think this is what they'll do in 20 years. I think they'll pack up and go to another location. They'll need a new facility by then. This is not a long-term investment in our community. In fact, it is more of a calculated destruction of it. Somebody talked here about, I believe it was Mr. Ecker, about catalytic job creator. I believe this would be a catalytic community destroyer.
One more time for Jose Flores. All right, we've got to do everyone that I see on the list. Oh, no, I've got two more, I'm sorry. Christian Brunelli from the last list we had. Christian Brunelli.
Hi, I'm Christian Brunelli. Just one of my affiliations. I do sit out of the Word of Education in this county, although I'm not speaking for that word. And you asked me to talk about the incentives, because I think most of the discussion tonight has been about the benefits or cost of the project as a whole and not about what the incentives would do. You can think about incentives because you have a great business idea, that this is cash-strapped and therefore it needs an incentive to get it off the ground, and therefore the benefits will come later. But does anyone seriously think that Amazon is cash-strapped or capital-strapped in their ability to do this project? And I've been thinking answer is no, and your incentives wouldn't make any difference in that. As other people have said, we have to think about what kind of business this is. The distribution business, it's a logistics business. The advantage is proximity, which means that you might want to give someone an incentive because they have two different locations, one they might prefer and another one, and you want them to bring it to your location. But then Amazon wants a location because of proximity to a wealthy consumer community in the Hudson Valley, and none of your incentive is going to change that or make it more economic sense. My last point is about, you know, just this idea of ratables. Historical experience kind of says that whatever benefits ratables bring, they eat up by all the costs of servicing those ratables. And I'll just conclude with just, oh, two last points. I work in a school district that has an Eiffel House warehouse, an IBM campus, gives a Galleria, a Gap warehouse. And despite all those different advantages, you still manage to spend at least per pupil of any district in this county. And I think that shows you what will happen to the benefits of the community, is that they don't really materialize in the long run. I'll conclude, 250 years ago, Adam Smith kind of had a long book about what makes a community wealthy. And a lot of people read the first few pages and invisible hand and division of labor, but almost all of that book is about all the different subsidies and schemes that businesses go through that actually make a community less wealthy. And I'll just summarize kind of his judgment on that. He says, "Seldom do businessmen meet together, even for merriment or diversion, but the concurrification ends in conspiracy against the public or incentive tribes to raise prices." And I ask you not to do that.
Last name is Raymond Ott.
Good evening, my name is Raymond Ott. This is my beautiful wife Diane. We live right in front of the big Amazon building going in real soon. We've been living there for 23 years. We have a farm, animals. We raise six kids there, put them all through school through here. And it used to be a beautiful little country town. Howard Spiro sold it to Nick Fitzpatrick, and now it's a big quarry. And it's an absolute disaster to us. They pretty well ruined our house. Our house is 132 years old. The foundation's all cracked, the foundation, the basement always leaks. I got to jack up the house now and put a new foundation in besides that. Down in Stony Point where we grew up, same thing happened. You know, they brought in a bunch of big places, new fire department, new fire trucks, a new police department, everything. Our taxes went up like 32%. And I learned from there, moved up to Chester, and they put in all them warehouses and everything. They said, oh, yeah, we're going to be, you know, getting big tax breaks. No, no big tax breaks or anything. The big warehouses and everything went in, and our taxes ended up going up. New firehouses, new fire trucks, new cop cars, new cops. I'm telling you, I learned from there, and what you people are going to be paying, it's coming. They're putting a water line in up through the railroad tracks. They're putting in all the railroad tracks, and we're all getting a new water bill coming soon. Okay, before they build this building, we're getting a water line coming up through railroad tracks from Middletown. It's coming up and down Route 6, and you're getting a water bill soon, whether you want it or not. Okay, you know, this quarry here, it was supposed to last for two years, three years, and it was supposed to be a $1.2 million, and now it's a $3.2 million or some crazy stuff. And besides that, there's two other, there's two other buildings going on that site too, warehouses. It's just out of control. And like they said about the power plant down there, that is going to have 250 full-time jobs drive by there. You only see seven or eight cars in there, okay? Seven or eight cars, oh, 250, yeah. That was temporary, like this one here, if this goes through. Just the pollution alone, what I have to deal with, okay? I had to go back to the Westchester Medical Center because my leg got infected. And they went in there and they said that there's a lot of like sand and stuff in my leg. I had a very bad accident, and I had to go get it all washed out and stuff in the burn unit. And what it was from, every day in our driveway, the dust from the quarry and stuff, you can write your name every day, go through the car wash. The next day, by noon time, you write your name in the car from the dust. Nobody cares. The pollution, the noise, okay? They open the quarry at 5:30 in the morning, okay? And they let the trucks line up out there from, because they run back forth to the city. They overload the trucks, and so this way they beat DOT. DOT starts usually around 7 o'clock, and so then they get out of there and get back to the city so they'll get the overload tickets. Preparation there, traffic, traffic is horrendous. Trucks lining up is crazy. It's at least 250 dump trucks a day, quad axle, and we got to breathe that in. We have three machines around our house, and I got to rinse out the filters once a week. The stuff we have to breathe in. My wife, eight times she's coming in from feeding the animals with her nose bleeding. My wife's very, very healthy, never had no problems, and now she does. She can't even talk right now. She goes, say hello, mama. Say hello.
Ms. Row, another twenty seconds, please.
Yeah, okay, I'll be out of here in 20 seconds. Purchased 23 years ago due to hands, union workers. You know, we feel for the union workers and everything, but they're going to be out of here as soon as the place is built and everything. The people making 20 bucks an hour, $23 an hour, you know, they're just temporary, and that ain't going to do nothing for us around here. And give them a tax break? What are you people, crazy? He's the third richest man in the world. He don't need no tax break. Come on, folks, okay? Thank you, good night. Let me think about what the hell you're doing, please.
Is there anyone who has a name and a speaker who would like to speak, yes, please? I'd love to state your name.
Hi, I should have been on the list because I put my name on the list. Steve McCowen. I live on St. John's Chapel in Nashville.
Okay, I'm sorry if I skipped you.
No, that's okay.
Maybe skip one or two.
Hey, that's fine. So listen, this project has nothing to do with jobs and unions. Residents here are finding it hard enough to pay taxes, school and home. Now you're giving Amazon a free tax break, and the residents are paying for it. If you haven't noticed, many residents are moving out because they can't afford living here anymore. I have lived in Orange County my entire life. I have lived in Orange County my entire life, and what's been happening in Orange County is totally disgusting. Wayriana is being sold out by you. Why don't you help out companies and stores here now? Help out, help Bosie's so that the kids here can have, the kids here now will have a good paying jobs with futures that they can be proud of. See new complexes where parents can stay with their kids and take care of grandchildren. I don't know where you live, but I guarantee you it's not one of them. I opposed this project, and I think you should reconsider. And giving Amazon a tax break in our dollars is not only disgusting, but absurd.
Anyone else that has not had a chance to speak would like to? Please, sir. Come state your name, please.
My name is Ward Lamb. I live on Kenny Hill Road here in Slate Hill. I was a teacher in this school district for 28 years. And what I've listened to here tonight, I learned something from all my peers in my community, and there's something you don't get. This is a community, and we are blocking it from becoming something that is humanistic and valuable to its members. I'm furious at what's going on. I know so many people here. Carl Bravnik was the kid in the other club about democracy that I created a Democrat club for in this school. And I see that he's just as insensitive as he was then about a community. I needed to say something because I really want to see change in this community. I want investment in it. What happened to the library that was proposed? Go to Warwick, there's a gorgeous library. Everybody goes there. And what do we have? As long as we don't sustain things that matter to us as families and community, we are losers. And I don't want to be a loser.
So the name I think is me is Stoney Alad, so be happy for the record.
Ward Lamb.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come here? One other gentleman here.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Stephen Hunter. I live at the top of McBride Hill off to the side. My place is the Maple Lawn Farm. I've lived in Slate Hill, which is a hamlet of Tana Mooyana, since October 10th, 1966. My family's been there since 1906. Listening to everybody here tonight, I just want to address a couple of things. There was a very well dressed union official who lived in Montgomery, and his neighborhood has benefited from the warehouses in, or his neighborhood has benefited from the warehouse. Me personally, I don't want to walk out my front door, look to the left and not see a sunrise, but see a morning eclipse from the building. To the woman who said that she lived near an Amazon warehouse and make a wish list, I have two things to say to that. One, I could make a wish list that would make Jeff Bezos' eyes pop and his jaw drop. But secondly, I don't want to be owned by anybody. If he gives us, if Amazon gives us a wish list, they own us because, you know, they've given us, you know, football field or lights in the park, whatever it is, we shouldn't be owned by them. And as far as the gentleman from the Orange County Partnership who talked about numbers and data, he talked about after 20 years, that Amazon pays $68 million for the school budget. I'm not a great mathematician, so that's barely $3 million a year for a school budget that is 220 million plus per year. So that's pretty much dropping the bucket. And last time I checked, when the union boss said about coffee shops and businesses, robots don't eat, drink, or buy gas. So the biggest question I have for you is, what is guaranteed after 20 years if Amazon doesn't walk off into sunset eclipse? And who's gonna pay the taxes? We already have a warehouse sitting there that is vacant, and no one's paying taxes in town for that. Now, here's a novel idea. You guys are the IDA, you want to develop it? Propose to Amazon. You buy the bedline warehouse. That would provide jobs for all of the unions. They can retrofit that. That's a big, beautiful, barely used, new warehouse. Put another store on top of that. There would be two years worth of union jobs. Maybe not as many as this big warehouse they want to do, but in 20 years, I don't want to have a mother and a daughter vacant warehouse. That's the point of it. And as far as the mine, the mine, you could make some type of park out of that. You could make a water park for the summer, and you could make a winter park for the winter. And then you could have coffee shops and businesses and people bringing smoke. So IDA, get your thumbs out of your wazuz and do the right thing. And as the crow flies, that warehouse is barely three quarters mile from my house. And I don't want the friggin' smoke and all the pollution blowing my way from the northeast we's coming every single day. Thank you.
Okay, so please state your name.
Alan Stevens. Amazon wants you to say no, because until you say no, they're just gonna keep on adding more. First, they got the Slate Hill Commerce Center approved, and then they got Liberty right next to it approved. And what Bluebird is, Bluebird is, is an amendment to the Slate Hill Commerce Center, taking it from a 55-foot building up to 103-foot building. Now, they had made deals already and got incentives. Were you involved in those incentives with them? Because in that incentive in 2023, it shows that the property was bought for 27 million. And now they have the land in their pilot, they want it to be worth 3 million. So how do you pay 27 million for land and have it automatically become 3 million? Because I might want to buy a few lots local. Gee, I wish I didn't say that. So like I said, the Slate Hill Commerce Center has already been built. Mr. Boone from Scanell let us know in the public hearing that a building will be built there if Bluebird does not go through. They didn't say if Bluebird didn't get a pilot, they said if Bluebird didn't get approved, they would be building something there. So the union jobs, I assume they already got incentives. They are guaranteed the union jobs for those buildings because it was done through Orange County Partnership or you. I look at the page, it says IDA, but Orange County Partnership signees up there or something. I don't know, it gets confusing to me. But anyway, they're already guaranteeing that they're building Slate Hill Commerce Center and Liberty, so I don't see why they never asked for any pilots with them, and then all of a sudden they're asking for a pilot for this huge Bluebird, which is much more, much more traffic. As you drove here today, you drove across 84, and that's a one-way in each direction bridge, and that's the access to 84. They have 40% of their employees coming from here on the west side. And if you're anywhere as an airport service, you're getting on 84 already. So 40% of the 2,800 jobs are coming from this little tiny area that's bullshit. They're coming, they're doing that for the traffic supply, traffic study. And they're also putting, now it's 10, when Slate Hill Commerce Center and Liberty were approved, 5% of their trucks were coming this way. They're only supposed to be going to other Amazon facilities, so I don't know how, why they're coming 5% this way, other than to try to get the traffic study to cross 84 Bridge, which is only two lanes. I don't approve of a pilot for the job. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Watson Day. I'm Tana Mooyana, I'm a resident.
Sir, could you spell your last name?
S-O-N-T-A-G.
Go ahead, that's all right.
So I work in Montgomery where there was an Amazon pilot program in 2020. And Montgomery could have used that money to better their roads. Their local roads are awful due to the damage of trucks. The potholes are big, and they're everywhere. They also could have used that money for better sports facilities at the school. They currently have some of the worst facilities in Orange County. And they could use that money as a great benefit for their sports facilities. If Amazon warehouse is such an economic development, Montgomery's taxes would not be increasing at the rate that they are, and their school facilities would not be the way that they are. What happened there is gonna happen here, right? The same blueprint, the same thing. Our towns and schools could use the money, they're not paying. I oppose the project, but if it's approved, a 2.2 trillion dollar company should not be getting any tax breaks. They will come regardless, like people have said. They need our land, they need our resources. They're gonna come without a tax incentive. If they don't, somebody else will. The local construction will be used. They don't need a tax incentive. There needs to be a way to have local union construction and corporations be taxed in full. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anyone involved? Alicia.
Yep, if I could add one more comment?
Very quickly, we're not having to repeat twice.
I know that the pilot program is intended to stimulate economic development, but it actually is just shifting the burden of funding local services, including schools, onto homeowners. And this will be increased property taxes on existing residents and reducing funding to the schools and potentially slower economic growth in the long run.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else who has spoken, would like to speak? Yes, okay.
State your name, sir.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Menudo. I'm a county legislator. I happen to chair the Education, Economic Development Committee for the county. I'm glad everybody got here. This is best form of government, because everybody gets a shot at this. Everybody gets to get heard, whether you like it or not, whether you're for it or not, you're heard. I'm not gonna reiterate a lot of the things that got hashed out tonight, but I will say this. The IDA is needed because we have a government at the state level that is so overburdened and so overtasked that they have created the need for an IDA to provide incentive for companies to be here. We have a senator who's asked and required Orange County to pay for a monitor for this committee. I heard tonight, why don't we fund SUNY Orange and Bosie's? The county funds these things. We do this, not the state, and they will be in a fair share. And the reason why we are here tonight is because this state is so friendly to business that we need an IDA to keep people here, to bring people here. Whether you like it as a warehouse or not a warehouse, whether it's the highest invest used to the land, really doesn't matter. Would we like to see a park there? Sure, who's funding it? Who is here right now saying, "I want to put a park in and baseball field"? Nobody. Well, I would love to see that happen, but it's not here now. What's before us is this warehouse. We have a warehouse that's been approved here. This is an expansion of that warehouse. And the other thing I heard tonight is that the unions would have benefit regardless of whether this warehouse went in or not. No, the IDA guarantees that the unions, local trades, including architects and engineers locally, work on this project. It's the only thing that does. Two years ago, we had Senator Scoopis talk about 145 AMB, and that he promised the unions that they were gonna get a shot at that. That was illegal, it never happened. He duped the unions on that. This program does not dupe the unions. This program guarantees 85% are gonna be there. We certainly got money back into the community by everybody who works on this project. And I'm not talking about coffee, I'm not talking about these other, this is about real things. Real things that you live here and live your life by, your homes, your landscaping, your children, all of these things. So I'm glad we had this meeting tonight. I'm so happy we've been here, and thank you all very much for your hard work, and thank you all for your input.
Okay, then you want to speak? Please. Just state your name.
My name is Felice Preston, and I resonate with Allwenda.
Felice?
Yes, first name, like Navidad.
Yes, right.
Okay. Very fast, I came here in an open mind tonight. I wanted to hear everybody and wanted to get everybody's opinion. There was just one question I didn't hear, though. I know they're talking a lot of numbers. We're talking about getting a lot of things, you know, both pros and cons, okay? And I do admit, we're the David and they're the Goliath, okay? Whatever, Scanell has already said they'll build something, they'll do whatever they've gotta do, and that is the way they're gonna look at it. But there was one question I'm just curious about. Who's gonna make them? Who's gonna make them pay? I'm just gonna fast forward. Buildings built, building's built, union drives away. We're all stuck here with our houses, we're all stuck with whatever they're gonna build. And again, Amazon is just one sector of this issue. There are still seven and eight other warehouses that'll go. And I'm sure they're gonna ask for pilot incentives as well. They would be dumb not to, okay? But the thing is, who's gonna make them pay? I mean, are we gonna put a chain across the road? We're gonna put a lien on the building? You know, suppose that, you'll hear the laughter from the boardroom. You know what I mean? It's not even Jeff Bezos who runs it anymore. I mean, is the CEO gonna care? No, he's not gonna care. It'll be one last thing. You know, they'll laugh at us. "Oh, yeah, those schmucks, they gave it to you. They, they gave us all the money we wanted." At least make them pay. Some of the points here were very good. At least make them pay. They are, they're probably one of the richest countries, they're one of the richest companies in the country. There's no reason, like they said, if they're gonna come here and they want it that bad, they should pay the full boat. I have to. If I don't pay my taxes, there's a lien on my house, and my house gets sold from under me, they gotta pay too. You know what I mean? There's no such thing. There's no such thing as a free lunch. You know, that's the way that it really kind of goes. I know, I'm sorry about the state, you're right. The state is very, has a very unfriendly environment towards industry and things like that. But you know what? That's a remember in November deal. You don't like the way the bravado walks, you don't like the way Scoopis talks, you gotta remember in November. You know, change your governor, change the way that it goes. That's really, that's that issue. But all I'm saying is, I just think if it's a fair thing, they definitely should be paying more than they do. 12 million in 20 years, that's a, they'll laugh. It's a drop in the bucket to them. But anyway, that's all I've got to say on it. Everybody wants us to home, I'm not good. Thank you very much.
Speaker, last call for speakers.
I have a quick question.
Come on, folks.
I have a quick question.
It's not a Q and A session, happy to talk to you afterward, though.
A clarification, then?
Hello, go ahead.
Because you kept saying during the thing that we have to stick to the pilot agreement and the IDA, but from what I know, environmental issues and costs are one of the criteria that you're supposed to look at. So why would you dissuade people from talking about environmental costs and issues?
I don't think I cut certain people off, so I didn't hear.
Okay, and the other thing is, public opposition is also an issue or a public concern or a viewpoint, so why not hold a referendum and let the voters of Allwenda decide? Why not let's hear from them directly?
Okay.
By a vote?
Ma'am, you gonna speak? I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, I just wanted to ask.
Okay.
I wanted to ask.
Okay. Anyone else? Here we go. We're gonna close this public hearing at 9:30 PM, 9:30 PM, but I just want to remind you, we're still accepting written comments until June 26th at 4:00 PM. Please make sure you'll be received by that time. So any other comments or any of your colleagues that want to say something, please do. Thank you all for coming. Thanks for being so respectful, we appreciate it greatly. Thank you all for coming, thanks for being so respectful, we appreciate it greatly. Have a good day, drive home safely.